Good evening, everyone. And welcome to a somewhat late regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. The clock on that wall is incorrect. The correct time right now, actually they fixed it, it's 9:20 PM. So it's been fixed since our caucus meeting. Today is January 15, 2019. Again, it's about 9:20 PM. And I call the meeting to order. I'll cut a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mayor. May I call Councilwoman Park after the roll call?
After the roll call.
Sure. Council, uh, Mayor Krajnacki?
I'm here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Song?
Here.
Savari?
Here.
Park is absent at the time of roll call, but I will be calling her. Councilperson Zeressa?
Here.
O?
Here.
Our attorney?
You.
Uh, DPW superintendent?
Here.
And borough clerk.
Thank you. Let's start this meeting the way we always start our meetings, with the flag salute, and then please remain standing after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to have a moment of silence for, um, the first person is a 23-year-old Davis, California, police officer Natalie Corona. She was shot dead in an ambush last week. And the second person I'd like to have a moment of silence for is Shreveport, Louisiana, police officer Chadley Payne. She was also shot dead last week. So let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion and typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Wanted to make a few comments. There's been a lot of confusion over the last couple of weeks, so ever since our reorganization meeting. Uh, just wanted to mention that the day after I was elected mayor in November 2015, the news reporters called me and said to me that council members Gloria O. and Ed Zeressa said that I would fire people from their jobs at the borough. And I said, "Why?" They said, "Well, because you're a Republican, you're going to fire them, because they're Democrats." And I said, "I told the reporters that jobs, all jobs are very important to our borough employees and to their families, and that if you have a job with the borough and you do your job, you naturally just keep your job." I don't believe in political hirings or firings, I just believe in people doing their jobs. And I always honored my word. And again, don't forget, jobs are important to everyone. So at our reorg meeting on January 3rd, council members O., Zeressa, Park, Savari, and Song, they did exactly what Gloria Ed told the press in 2015 I would do, but again, I never did. Think about it. They fired or did not reappoint our court clerk and the borough administrator and our borough attorney. They also violated my 30-day right to hold over the borough attorney and the borough administrator. As a result, people have been hurt. Families have been hurt. Laws have been violated, and the borough has been exposed to more liability. Additionally, the immediate terminations of these people resulted in the work not being properly transitioned. So our citizens were also hurt. Think about what kind of people we have sitting up here that would fire people for no other reason than politics. I'm also taking this opportunity to speak with you about our municipal government and the division of powers, because that also became an issue at our reorg meeting, and I see it's going to become an issue again tonight, because history predicts the future with this crowd. So I won the election, as did the others understand us, except for the clerk and the borough attorney, who I say is purported borough attorney, because I don't think either one of them should be acting in their roles right now as administrator and attorney, because I had 30-day holdover, which they violated. Neither one of them has any executive power, okay? Let's establish that. They're not elected. And unlike the members of the council, I won the election to become mayor. And as mayor, I have statutory powers, and those are codified by New Jersey law. It's NJSA 4860-5. There's a long list, but included in those powers are the following. The mayor shall be the head of the municipal government. So you could scream all you want, "Not my mayor, not my mayor," just like people do, "Not my president." I am the mayor. I worked hard to get here. I rang a lot of doorbells. I talked to a lot of residents. I won by a lot of votes, okay? But I represent everybody. Also, the mayor shall have all those powers designated by general law. I have those also. Then, very importantly, because this is being attacked by Councilwoman O., the mayor shall reside at meetings of the council, and I may vote to break a tie. Now finally, the relevant section, which is H. The mayor shall see to it that the laws of the state and the ordinances of the borough are faithfully executed. He shall recommend to the council such measures as he may deem necessary or expedient for the welfare of the borough. For the welfare of the borough, not the welfare of a political party, but of the borough, everybody. He, the mayor, shall maintain peace and good order and have the power to suppress all riots and tumultuous assemblies in the borough. Okay? Now, at our January 3rd reorganization meeting, we saw a power grab by Gloria Ed, Ellen, Jimmy, and Deborah. As council members, they brought an improper motion to introduce amended and restated bylaws that they gave me a minute before the meeting. In their fantasy bylaws, they look to have Gloria preside over meetings as council president in violation of New Jersey law. They look to have the control of the audience in violation of New Jersey law. And they want to limit your free speech to five minutes in violation of New Jersey law and the U.S. Constitution. While the five-minute limit is tempting, I have never limited anyone's time, and we all know how some citizens have droned on for over 20 minutes. Instead, what I do as a practical matter is that once the speaker becomes redundant, I respectfully suggest that they end their presentation. I don't have a quantitative time limit, I have a qualitative limit. Now, as council members, none of them have any executive authority, except in my absence. They can only act as a council, such as the Board of Directors. No director could act alone. And they can only act as a council at a duly noticed and duly convened meeting. So it strikes me as highly disrespectful to our citizens, our borough, and our democracy that council members O., Song, Savari, Zer, and Park have made a power grab so early in our journey together. I went to court and let a judge listen to it. And Mr. Wunsch was there yesterday with my attorney, and the judge basically said, "Work out the bylaws." But tonight I see that they have a new set of bylaws, which haven't been worked out with us. So we'll probably be back there tomorrow. Now, I have heard many times that there are three things that you should never do, and I'll mention them to you. Gloria, Jimmy, Deborah, Ed, and Ellen, who's on the phone, I believe. One, you should never covet or steal another person's power. You need to earn your own power and authority. I did that. I walked all over town, I rang a lot of doorbells, I met a lot of people, and I want to do good. I want to make changes, I want to be honest and forthright and professional, despite all the obstacles that have gotten thrown in my way over the last three years. You should never covet someone else's money. You need to earn your own. Don't look at our town as the money pit where you're going to make a lot of money for you and yourself and your friends. Keep the no pay-to-play ordinance in place, it's better that way. And the third one I'll just throw in for good order, which is you should never covet another person's spouse. I'll leave that one alone for now. Finally, we now find ourselves in a situation where the council majority have purportedly appointed Albert Wunsch as our borough attorney. So by way of background, I did not reappoint Mr. Wunsch as public defender in 2016, for good reason. Because his law practice, for all intents and purposes, was focused on representing police officers. Actually, it was 2017. So it struck me as, so it struck me as being highly conflicted for him to, on the one hand, have a law practice defending and representing police officers, who I highly regard, and on the other hand, to be our public defender representing people against police, essentially. It makes no sense. As an attorney, which I am, one of, you have to make a decision. Who am I going to represent? Employers, employees, criminals, you know? You can't be all over the place. So let me finish. So then, so, hold on. So then, then what happened in 2018? That's too, fine. So then what happened? It's your conflict, and you can talk about it later. But there's one more matter, in which Mr. Wunsch appeared before a panel that I was chairing last year, last summer, and it involved a Little League coach in town being suspended because he pled guilty in another town for striking a law enforcement officer. Okay? So I chaired that panel, and Mr. Wunsch was very vocal that day, and very unhappy at the end of that day, because quite frankly, I don't want people who plead guilty for striking law enforcement officers coaching our children, okay? Pretty basic. Another conflict. Not wanting to shy away from conflicts of interest, up until his purported appointment as borough attorney on January 3rd, 2019, Mr. Wunsch appeared on behalf of Captain Brian Murphy in connection with disciplinary charges brought by the borough against Captain Murphy for racist speech while on duty. Mr. Wunsch was therefore addressed to the borough, which was, which brought those charges against Captain Murphy and others. Now, Mr. Wunsch has taken it upon himself to be the final say in the release of the Chaffee recordings, which we all heard about, under Oprah requirements and under Judge Farrington's order. Mr. Wunsch has therefore reviewed an audio recording from which his former client has disciplinary charges pending against him by his current client, the borough. As a consequence, Mr. Wunsch now has a conflict of interest both with his former client, Captain Murphy, and his current client, the borough of Englewood Cliffs. Note that the borough can never, the borough itself can never weigh the conflict of interest, so I reserve further comment on this. And one additional conflict of interest for Mr. Wunsch, the former client Captain Murphy now seeks to become our next police chief. And that process will in part involve, you guessed it, Mr. Wunsch as borough council. I reserve further comment. I think it's bizarre. And as an attorney, it's a rabbit hole you can never come out of. I'll end my comments by saying that no matter how you feel about me, no matter what you think of me, no matter which political party you belong to, you can always know that through my words and actions, I have always done the right, honorable, and honest things to protect our citizens and boroughs' rights. And I have shed light where light needed to be shed. And that's why I'm somewhat controversial from time to time, but I'm doing it for everyone else in this interest, because I don't get a salary, I don't get paid, I don't even have a parking spot. I gave it away, I turned it into a handicap spot. Okay, so that's all I have to say on that. In terms of the Borough Charity Project, which is the Office of Concerned Food Pantry, there's a collection basket out front. We've been doing this for almost a year now. At every regular meeting, we collect non-terrible food items. If you didn't bring anything tonight, and you want to go home and bring it back, or you want to bring it in the morning, it'll still be there. So I encourage you, and I thank everyone who's actually done it so far. Correspondence that we received were from Eric Bernstein, who's our tax appeals attorney, is privileged and confidential. And there's also a notice of violation from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs regarding George Rego, who's our tax assessor. And that also involves conflicts of interest. So with that said, I'd like to open up to the public, and what I'm really interested in hearing from the public is your views, if you choose to talk about it, is Gloria's power grab, Chaffee's recordings, Mr. Wunsch's conflicts, renovating Johnson Park and affordable housing. And I should also mention that number, Resolutions 51 and 52 were tabled at the, at caucus, and they've been tabled to a special meeting when our affordable housing attorneys can be here with us to attend. So that's number 51, approve and adopt Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and 52, approve intent to bond in connection with Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Second?
More favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Come up to this desk here with the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. First, I would like to bring up some issues with Oprah requests. As one of the people who has an Oprah request in for the tapes, I have real problems with Mr. Wunsch, given his conflict of interest with Mr. Murphy reviewing the tapes. I have one of the tapes, one of the ones that was not designated confidential, which was given to me. Your client saw it, mocking former Councilman Park, which is not, in my opinion, conduct appropriate for a police officer, let alone a captain. I'm also concerned about correspondence to the mayor and council. I requested a copy of a letter which someone sent to the mayor and council. I don't think there's a reasonable expectation of privacy in correspondence sent to the mayor and council. The person who sent it can give copies to any person they want. However, I was told I couldn't have it because there was a reasonable expectation of privacy in correspondence to the mayor, in this particular correspondence to mayor and the council. The letter concerns Martin Geiger, and I think, given his wife's political activism, the public has a right to know what is in that letter. The public has a right to know whether Mrs. Geiger has a hidden agenda. We have a right to know. Does this letter discuss or imply that the Geigers have received favors from the police? Does the letter allege misconduct on someone's part? I have yet to hear a definition of how reasonable expectation of privacy is being defined in regard to Oprah requests, and I am concerned that this definition is not going to be consistently With regard to affordable housing, I'm very concerned about the putting off dealing with the Affordable Housing Plan. I think it is essential that we avoid having 600 townhouses built or more on that property. If we have 600 townhouses, assuming one child per townhouse, we're going to have 600 new children in the schools. If you have two, you're going to have 1,200. We currently have 512 children in our schools. So you would be doubling or more the number of children in the schools. We don't have that much physical capacity. We would need to build another school. So I just did a little basic newspaper research on recent school construction. The Maya Angelou Elementary School in Jersey City cost $49.3 million for 692 students, or $70,630 per student. The Joseph C. Caruso Elementary School in Canesburg cost $50.9 million for 842 students, or $60,451 per student. The Frank J. Citirel Academy in Elizabeth costs $64.1 million for 1,284 students, or $49,922 per student. And Hackensack has proposed building a new school for its 7th, 8th, and 9th graders at a cost of $91.4 million. Assuming that Englewood Cliffs is able to build at the low end of that cross-spectrum, the cost of a new school for 600 additional students will be about $30 million. And that's just the capital costs. The cost of operating the schools will also double if we get an additional 600 students. So I think it's incumbent on us to work on getting the affordable housing built by the borough, so we only add the number of units that are needed to meet our affordable housing obligation, and not have a builder do it, because if you have the builder do it, you're going to have the affordable housing units plus four units, an additional four units for every affordable housing unit they build. And the cost of additional schools, facilities, and additional students is going to be monumental.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Michael Tellz, Our Homeowner, Nine Church Road. Mr. Wunsch, I think you have to donate some more land for another school.
That's right.
I think you're going to have to donate some more land for another school.
I'll bring it up with a pass, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to say, um, you know, I've met, I've told the borough everything regarding the attorneys, the insurance company, and regarding my case, I want all the evidence out there, if I have anything to say about. But I've been very transparent, and we know what's going on with your attorneys. But I have to disclose, because I don't want to be accused of anything, that Mr. Wunsch was formerly my attorney, and I don't know if he's going to be handling anything regarding my case. No, okay. But if you are, I just want to say it out loud.
Well, it's a pending case, so...
Okay, but if he...
Borough attorney does everything. It supervises all attorneys. So I don't want to stand here and not say something. Mr. Wunsch has to work out his time.
Can I finish, though?
Yeah.
Okay, but if there, I know that the two sides don't get along. If he's to work on it, I want, I'm asking Mr. Zeressa and Ms. O. to pass on the information that you're aware of, so he's aware of it. You know, so in other words, if he works on it, I want him to have everything. So that's it, and, Al, I just wanted to, I want every single thing out there, and I always have, so I just have to say that. I figured I shouldn't write you privately about this, so, okay? Oh, and let me just mention something about the school. It is an outrage, the Mount Laurel decision. And I was thinking, you know, basically, when I talk to people from other towns about it, they tell me that the idea was to keep people in, in the town, right? Our town wasn't constructed where we threw anybody out. In other words, Mount Laurel kind of makes sense if you have, if you have a population that is going to be thrown out because they want to get high-tax things in there. That's not the case with us. People moved to this community because they had low taxes, and they wanted, when they got old, to be able to retire here. And I think that's, you know, that's a point that could be made, possibly, because it's truly not fair. If we get six, if we get 600 kids in here, our taxes are going to go up, and what's going to happen is the older people are going to have to move out, because the taxes are going to double, so that the lower-income people should, should come in, not stay in. So I think it's outrageous. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. You know, I wanted to talk about a little bit of history, too. I'm really concerned about the lack of civility in the newly-elected Democrat people that are sitting up there. I went home after that special meeting, and I actually felt physically ill for the people who were treated so disrespectful by your decision to terminate them while they're sitting at their positions. In all the years that I've been in this town, I have never seen anything like that in my life, and I really feel that you all saying this praise of being fair and nice, "Let's kumbaya again," but you know what? What you guys did was a disgrace. It really was. And the fact is that when the Democrats came into power, when I was on the Board of Health as a secretary, I was the only one that was advertised, because I'm a Republican. How can you sit up there and, and talk all nice and how you want to do what's best for the town, yet you can disgracefully dismiss people the way you did? I was appalled by it, and I think you should all think about what you did, because that was wrong. To get rid of that man who was standing there, whether he was a good administrator or a bad administrator, whether you liked him or not, to just say, "Leave your keys," to, to let that woman walk off that dais the way you did, it was disgraceful. Nobody else ever did that. No Republican that I remember, in the few times that they've been up there and had a majority, did that. And I'm disgusted with what I saw. And I love to hear everybody's comments, but you know what? This is a community. We are Republican, Democrats, independents, undeclared, whatever we are. We are all a community. And I want to see that being represented from now on, instead of singling people out. And I think it's a disgrace. And you're lucky I didn't sue when I did that, because that was wrong. They advertised my position so that I couldn't apply for it. So I just, I just want to put it out there, because I don't talk a lot about these things. We quietly go away, okay? We don't make the ruckus that you people do. That's the one thing I wanted to say. Mr. Wunsch, you know how I feel about you. I've known you for a long time, our children have known each other. I hope to see, I really do, from the bottom of my heart, as a resident, as a friend, as a Republican, as whatever I am, I really want to see some fairness on this council going forward. I don't want to hear, I don't want picking and choosing of history, okay? History is history, and we're either going to look back at it, or we're not. But I don't want picking and choosing of which history we're going to agree with and which one we're going to say, "Oh, that was in the past," and it doesn't really matter. So I hope, I really do, as, as a friend, as a resident, that I see some civility up there from everyone, and a representation of my rights as a Republican, as their rights as Democrats, and that's what I wish for in this town right now.
In the city constellation, in 1859, my family founded the Republican Party in this town, okay? I'm the only Democrat out of the entire, in fact, my poor father tried to turn over my spring, telling me I was a Democrat, but nonetheless, I'm the only Democrat.
Well, I was a Democrat when I came to this country at the age of 11, from Italy. I'm an immigrant, a legal immigrant, may I add. I had to go through all the trials and tribulations to get here. Our family members had to, had to sign papers that said that if my father couldn't support us, that our family members would. I just want to say, we've all had a beginning, and we need to move forward, and I'm a Republican now, okay? And those are, the reasons why I'm a Republican now are mine alone, because I don't stand with Democrats anymore. They don't, they don't represent my values, and that's why I'm a Republican.
But just so you know, Mrs. Lauren, I absolutely respect your position. I am open to any time you have a comment. You feel free to contact me. You know I adore your son. You know I adore your husband, okay? I adore you. I have no problem with you personally at all, and like I said, my door is open to anyone here to help out any time I can, because I am truly of the people. Because I live here. I have skin in the game, just like the only first borough attorney in the history of this town that's actually from this town. And so I have skin in the game. My interests are your interests.
Right. We all live here. We all live here. The mayor lives here, his lovely wife lives here, I live here, and... The mayor lives here, his lovely wife lives here, I live here, and so we all live here. We all have skin in the game, in everything that's going on.
And that's why I'm doing the best that I can under the circumstances. It's a very tough job, but I'm only here six days, so...
It's...
Okay.
But that doesn't erase your conflicts of interest, all the history. You still have them. It doesn't solve that problem, Mr. Wunsch.
So I would like to move forward to what's going on with our town right now, and my concerns about my residency here, on whether I stay or go because of what's happening in this town. First of all, I would like to say that...you know what? I was cleaning out my office, and I came across these things, and I said, "You know what? I think I need to address some of these issues." I have here a mailer that came out, "Stop Cran Jack's control. Say no to Mark Park and Dun Deal," who happened to be amazing people, really, really good people. And I have here the Democrats saying, "42 years of Democrats, no multifamily housing. 42 years of Democrats, high property values and low taxes." You know, I've lived here for 30 years, and I don't think this is...this is something that we need to address, is that the Democrats dropped the ball. For 42 years, they dropped the ball. We should have addressed the multifamily housing. We would not be in the position now, as we are, to have to put in more housing than we could have 42 years ago, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, 20 years ago, 10 years ago. High property values and low taxes. You know something? My taxes have steadily gone up under Democrat control, steadily. I moved in at 6,500. I'm now paying, I think, don't quote me, because my husband pays it, I want to say, close to $15,000. So I'm just saying that, you know, this is wonderful. Thank you for sending these out, because it makes Republicans look really bad. Look at what these bad Republicans did, when the fact is that Republicans have not been in control in this town for 42 years. The Democrats were. That's number one. Number two is these things, from the police, the police officers, the PVA. This scares me. Ladies and gentlemen, this scares me, because what this says is that you were supported 100% by my police department, okay? All I want to say is that anyone who benefited from this needs to recuse. Mr. Song, I don't know you very well. I know you've only been here two years. I know Ms. Valari. I know some of the other people sitting on this board, but you really need to consider that when you're voting, you remember, this is a conflict. This is a conflict. Once again, I am going to tell you and all the residents here that I had no...they did not work on my political campaign. It was not discussed with me. I cannot control who the police department supports. So I'm sorry that that doesn't work for you, but I am not conflicted, because I did not ask them to support me, neither did Jimmy, and I take it as an insult that you're insulating...
I am not insulting you.
That begins.
I am not insulting you.
So I'm sorry.
That when the police department uses their shield to send out to residents...
I'm not for that.
I'm not here to discuss this. I'm here to tell you how I feel. So please, let me finish.
And I'm telling you, I didn't control it. I think that when people are supported by one group, and the other party is not supported, there's a problem. Whether you talk to them, whether they talk to you, that's relevant to me. What's important to me is that this speaks volume. And as a resident, as a resident of this town, and Ms. O., please, I understand I'm boring you, but you know what? Out of everyone here, you should not be voting, and neither should Ms. Park. Another issue, the chief of police. I don't understand how anyone can sit up there and contemplate in any way to drop charges, to not follow through on whatever's already been done, when these tapes clearly indicate sexual harassment, talking about people's races, Koreans, whoever. I don't know how anyone on this board...and I can tell you, knowing myself, if that were me up there, I would never condone such behavior by anybody, especially the police. This is the man who was the head of our police department, and to now say, at some point, I hope this doesn't happen, that you people are actually thinking of dropping charges, forgiving him, whatever. You know something? There are football players out there who can't play ever again because of their behavior, and all they are is a football player. Or there's people losing their jobs every day because they complimented a woman, saying, "Oh, you look really nice today," and that woman takes a sexual offense to that, and they get...those people get fired. And for this to go on, and for anybody who is going to sit up there and excuse this, then you have no conscience. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Yes.
I want to comment on a number of items. First of all, following up on what Mrs. Valari said, Jimmy Song and Debbie Savari campaigned on a feel-good, make-it-better scenario. You know, stop the arguing, stop the fighting, stop everything. Everything is going to be peaceful and calm and beautiful. And like she said, a kumbaya moment. And right from the beginning, at the reorganization meeting, it was totally the opposite. So basically, they lied to the residents about how they were going to handle themselves. There is no collegiate attitude amongst the council members and the mayor, and they're definitely not getting along, okay? And this is only January. We have a long year ahead of us, and I don't think it should continue. The bylaws, introducing the bylaws at the reorganization meeting was incorrect, because it was not a regular, scheduled council meeting. We have one regular, scheduled council meeting per month. Today, tonight, this is the regular, scheduled council meeting, and the next one will be the second Wednesday in February. So therefore, introducing them and attempting to introduce them and making a load of commotion and hullabaloo about it at the reorganization meeting was totally wrong. And I was here when the Republican majority attempted to do similar introduction of the bylaws with Aversa, not Aver...Agresta, and Patron, McMorro, and Satrian. So the mayor was outnumbered, and they didn't do it. They talked it, they did nothing. And they set up a committee with Councilman Plaka to have a bylaws committee, and they had Republicans and Democrats on that committee. Ultimately, it never went anywhere, and nothing happened, and they didn't do it. And Mayor Perizzi Jr., for the 10 years that he was the mayor, always asserted himself and repeatedly referred to himself as the CEO of the town, and he took the authority to do all things. He set the agenda. He would not allow sitting council members, even though they had a majority, to talk to any borough professionals, or borough employees, or department heads. Everything had to go through him. And there was various other rules that he initiated. There was also the time limit on the public speaking, which Ed Aversa kept time for. So, you know, things were not wonderful then, but the Republicans that were in the majority did not act the way you people are acting. And I have to say, it's a little disgraceful, the way you carried on. Now, I'm troubled when I see Resolution 51 and 52 coming off the agenda. It came off the agenda at the special meeting also. And at that time, I said that I was very concerned about it, because having been on the council that short period of time and listening to the planner and the attorney, Mr. Serenian, explain the ability the town has to use borough property, which the Aversa and O. were on the council when it was purchased, the Dower Building and the parking lot next to the Lions Club, with the intention of using it for 100% affordable housing. We've seen the plans. The plans are on the borough website. It's a very, very comprehensive plan. It looks good. And to think that we can have 57 100% affordable housing units there, and then possibly get the 9% tax-back program that would equal to, they said, a sweet spot, that we would get the equivalent of 77 units, and we would meet what they believe would be our requirement. To think that we would go and allow, or negotiate, or deal with Normandy, 800 Sylvan, and put housing on Sylvan Avenue, where it's our corporate headquarters, our million-trillion-dollar mile, and desecrate it with housing, and I would say, "Desecrate it," because once you have housing in one section there, you are going to get repeated requests, okay? And that shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen for the schools, because you're going to have one unit of affordable housing for every four units of market-rate housing. So you're going to have 300 units to get your 60 affordable housing. It doesn't make sense. And you can have people say, "Oh, you're going to have the taxes. You're going to get X amount of dollars in taxes." Whatever you get, it's not going to be worth it, because you're going to have to increase your garbage collection, you're going to have to increase your police department, you're going to have to increase your schools and your teachers and your classrooms. You have infrastructure. So many things are going to be affected. And I do believe that some people might be a little too cozy with the Normandy people, a little too cozy with them at some of the court hearings, a little too cozy with them at the grand opening of the space in 700 Sylvan. And I don't know why, and I hope it's not for personal gain, and I'm not saying that it is, but I hope it's not. I hope it's not to get real estate business. I hope it's not to get insurance business. I hope it's not to get legal business. I hope it's not to get financing business for members of your party, okay? Because everything that's built in the town needs financing. It needs insurance, okay? And you really have to think about what you're doing. To see that go off the agenda again tonight is very troubling to me, all right? And I hope you reconsider it. And I've sat in for the short period of time that I was on the council, private session with Owen Aversa in the room, and I can't say what was happening, but when we came out in public, I didn't see any negative effects of what was discussed, all right? So that. Now, I was also...a comment was made to me by one of your party loyalists, a person who always seems to have the inside track on many, many things. And that person said to me at the last meeting, when I was concerned about Normandy, "Don't worry, it's a done deal." I hope that there's no done deal in this council, okay? That Normandy is going to be negotiated, or whatever, mediated, and given housing. Done deal was what I was told, and that party is in the audience tonight that told me that, okay? So, you know, know who you're talking to, because people talk, okay? Done deal, all right? All right? Now, the other thing, Oprah. I put in three Oprah requests. I put in one Oprah request for Ellen Park's pictures that she took at the last meeting. She sat up there, put her phone up, and she took pictures, okay? Now, the response to my Oprah request was that Councilwoman Park said she doesn't have the pictures. If she took pictures from the dais, that's public record, that's part of borough records, I want a copy of the pictures that she took. And if she destroyed them, she has to fill out a destruction form certificate that she destroyed public records. The same effect, Councilman Aversa is up there texting. I want a copy of his text, okay? And he said to the clerk, "He doesn't have any." Again, it's a public record. If you do it while you're sitting up on the dais, it's a public record, and I want a copy of those texts. And saying that it doesn't exist doesn't fly, all right? The other thing is the tapes, okay? As a councilperson, one of the first things that I did is to make myself available, and I came in with Emery Rizzuto and Councilman Mark Park, and listened to the tapes. And I heard the tapes regarding Chief Chiyati with Captain Murphy, Captain Regan, Lieutenant Hinkleman, Maranuzzi's wife, Fran Maranuzzi, I like her very much, Janice Romano, Paul Duffy. Heard them speaking on the tapes. I heard our borough clerk speaking on the tapes, and that was why charges were referred to the clerks' association, whoever does the discipline there, okay? Those tapes should be released. They were ordered to be released by Judge Farrington. And Albie, I think that you really...there's only seven tapes that were supposedly possibly attorney-client, okay, out of 120. And to say you got to wait another 14 days before you release the tapes, and you don't know if you're going to release them?
I understand.
I thought you said something about that at the caucus meeting.
Not at all.
Okay. All right.
No, no, I'm simply...what I said before, and I'll say that, is that I need to review them, because I'm not sure the designations were correct. I have serious questions with regards to some of the other things my predecessor handled, and how she handled it. And all I'm doing is trying to protect the interests of the town. That's all.
I hope that's the truth.
It is the truth.
I hope it is. I hope it is. And I hope you're not trying to serve some of the council, the police officers that were reported on those tapes, okay? Because as a councilperson...
It's not protected.
Five people applied for the chief's position. Three of those are on the tapes, making those comments. Murphy, Regan is not applying for chief. Murphy, Hinkleman, and then Tracy's also on the tapes, the discussion about Tracy. But these people want to be chief, and you can have stigma-free and look for stigma-free when you have the highest police officers of this town using sexual terms, using vulgar comments, harassment, and talking about other people with malice, and threatening their life, okay? And people in that room, every person that was in that room when those comments were made, okay, that participated or heard it, every one of them should have reported it to the borough administrator as out of line, okay? They were all derelict in their duty in not reporting those... They were all derelict in their duty in not reporting those, that situation occurred, okay? And the council, okay, has been very reluctant previously, they took advantage, Ellen Park, Edversa, and Gloria O took advantage of the fact that Carol McMorro, as on the council, could not vote on it. And every time there was an item on the agenda to appoint a hearing officer, they voted no. Okay? They are very reluctant, and you know it, to deal with the situation. They want to wave a magic wand and make it go away. They want to hand Chief Chiotti a couple hundred thousand dollars and go away, all right? What happened was wrong, okay, and it, there should be damages to the people involved, okay? That's how real life works, okay? Should not be able to walk away from that, all right?
I would just add, Mary, and to ensure that it doesn't happen again in the future.
Yes, yes, that's why, like in industry, they have punitive damages. Because people have to not do things, okay? And the fact, and the fact which Albie brought up tonight, okay, that Edversa and O were on the council and Chiotti got a contract where if he was sued, the town had to pay his fees. The same thing's going to happen, we're going to have to pay his legal fees if you let him walk away from the charges. Because then, he was not responsible, and we're going to, he's had more attorneys on his arm than Curtis has little pills, okay? And it shouldn't, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. We shouldn't pay for his outrageous behavior. Most of the lawsuits that we have had in this town have been dealing with Chief Chiotti and because of him and because of the police department. Because the people that worked under him tried to do what they thought he wanted to do. Just like Bridget Kelly and the other guy tried to do what they thought Christie wanted them to do with the bridge, okay? People assume that they're winning favor with their superior by acting in a certain way, okay? And it shouldn't be. And the other thing, Edversa. Edversa, you are extremely disrespectful to members of the audience when you sit up there on your phone, or when you sit in the caucus and you're on your phone. You should put your phone in the caucus room and leave it there during a meeting and not look at it and not play with it, whether you're playing a game, you're talking to somebody, you're texting, whether you're on Facebook, whatever you're doing, it's disrespectful to anybody that's speaking.
But you do realize that everything we get is on our phone, right?
But we're not getting anything right now. You're supposed to be sitting there listening.
Everything on here is on my phone.
I know, but then...
That's how I look at things.
I know, but you're not looking at that right now. You're not looking at that right now. You're not looking at that right now. Now, everything is on paper in front of you, okay? What you're doing is ignoring the public.
You don't look at the iPad.
You're not representing the public because you're not listening to them. You're not listening to them. Okay? That's just my opinion.
Okay. Just a couple of housekeeping matters, but just kind of like a straw poll. By a show of hands, who here wants the recordings released publicly? Okay. It's about 95% of the people here. And, you know, they always say body English tells people a lot. Also, seating order tells people a lot, so you can see that there are certain people sitting with Normandy's attorney in the back row. That's all I'll say. Mr. Ashwell, I need you to sit down in a seat and clear that because of fire reasons. Also, a lot of problems that we had emanating from the tapes and from the police department, I feel are on the right track right now to be rectified. And this is the way it's being done. We've taken the politics out of the police department. We couldn't do that because the leadership of the police department was political. It was never the case before 2010. We're seeing a boost of morale. I thank Officer O'Shea for being here tonight. I think Officer in Charge Hill is doing a fantastic job. And folks, if you want to have a sustainable police department, it has to be non-political. It doesn't work otherwise. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Andrew Nekow, 54 Elm Street. Just touching on what you just mentioned with regards to Patrolman O'Shea, I'd make a recommendation, since he's here on overtime right now, that for the next meeting, why don't we get the officer in charge here? He can provide a dual purpose of, number one, answering the residents' questions. You know, we have had a rash of burglaries recently, which, you know, very little has been said about. And also, he can provide security. I think it's a win-win since, you know, obviously everybody's out of control tonight, that, you know, we can have the officer in charge, the head man over here, to preside over this. I know we used to have the police chief and the deputy chief at meetings before. And you know what, to be honest with you, I would really like to hear from the largest department head in the town that we can ask him questions. So I would put that up to the mayor and council, you know, maybe consider that for future meetings. And like I said, if we're going to have security, have the head man here. My next question, and, you know, a lot has been said about conflicts with regards to... Oh, by the way, Jimmy Debra, I did not attend a meeting, that's a congratulations again. But just a question for you guys is, you know, the people have droned on about you guys having a conflict. I'd like to know, did you take any money from the PBA?
I think I've made it very clear that I don't have a conflict.
Okay, no. You know, and Ed and Gloria, did you solicit money from the PBA or anything like that? Get donations? Because I checked the ELEC stuff, and I saw that your campaigns did not get anything from the PBA, you know, and not for anything if you didn't solicit support and they did it. And unions endorse political candidates all the time. You know, the New York City PBA, the Port Authority PBA, the New Jersey State Police PBA, they will endorse candidates left and right. So to say that it's unheard of for a police union, or any union for that matter, to endorse candidates and that automatically disqualifies people from voting on those matters, that's sort of silly. And it's also called free speech. You know, like it or hate it, in this country, we still have free speech for now. My next question, it has to do with the affordable housing proposals that were, that all of a sudden now we're going to be bonding money for. I did review the proposed plans, and I saw we assigned a dollar amount to certain things. And my question would be is, where did we get those dollar amounts from? Like, one of them was $5 million and change for a new police station. And I'd just like to know from the council, and probably better that, you know, we'll delay it to the next meeting, the next special meeting, where I can come and ask the professionals that came up with this plan, you know, where did that dollar figure come from? Because I know that Dumont is currently building a new police station that was budgeted at $15 million, and due to cost overruns, they're close to over $20 million right now. So my next other question regards to that is, I reviewed the plan, it was very nice, you know, back-of-the-napkin thumbnail sketches, but we have a big cell tower behind this building with long-term leases for telecom companies. Now, I can only imagine that if we break those leases to put up affordable housing or whatever, that that's going to cost the town a bit of money to relocate all that equipment, probably in the millions of dollar range, you know, after we're done with the lawyers, you know, trying to break the leases that they have. So there are a lot of unanswered questions about this that I do have a lot of concerns. The other question is, are we going to be setting up a housing authority? You know, if it's public housing in the state of New Jersey, you have to maintain a housing authority. Are we going to staff it? Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to provide for the properties? The ongoing upkeep, who's going to be in charge of, you can get housing, you can get housing, you can get housing. Fort Lee, Edgewater, Cliffside Park, Anglewood, they all have housing authorities that manages, manages their public housing. Is that going to happen in Anglewood Plus? I just find it very disturbing that all of a sudden, we're putting money to something that we still don't know what we need because that hasn't been finalized by the court yet, but now we're putting dollar figures in there. And it's not just good guess dollar figures, this is like wild assumption dollar figures that may not be adequate for what we need. I'm not aware of what the court will say. I hope that they come down on our side and say, "You know what? Your affordable housing requirement is three." That will not happen, you know?
That would be nice.
That would be nice, but, you know, I can dream. But at the same time, when we're going through all these plans, and to be honest with you, the plan that was submitted that's sitting in the building department, I think it's on the website, but I looked at the one in the building department, you know, it's very initial, it's a very high-level overview of what could happen.
Can I just question the council for one minute? It's the affordable housing litigation that's being mentioned here, so we really should not speak about certain aspects of it in public. Normandy's attorneys are here, they're watching this, I don't know why they want to watch this all the time, but they do, so...
They're looking for punishment.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No, I mean, like I said, I'm not expecting any of you, but these are questions that I have that hopefully at this special meeting, somebody can give me good answers on them. Because right now, what I see here does not seem like it's thought out through and does not seem like we're at the point where we can assign a dollar value, and I think it's very premature. And then if we do carry on the current process, we're going to be badly burned because we didn't do our due diligence in coming up with this plan. Like I said, when I saw that $5 million for a police station, that's a joke. In the state of New Jersey, you need to have certain requirements for new police stations and to say, with prevailing wages and everything like that, that that building is going to cost $5 million, that's a joke. Dumont, like I said, comparable to our department, they have a smaller manpower count there, they're spending $20 million for a police station. So I hope that, I agree with the council for tabling it.
And they own the property.
I agree with the council for tabling it, and I hope that at your next meeting, you can provide us better answers, which I will be sure to attempt. Now, I'll sit here unless there's any commentary.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell Perrino, 220 February Avenue. Good evening, members of the council, mayor. A couple of quick things. Pay-to-play first. Happy to announce that the planning board was able to abide by the letter and intent of the, of that ordinance. So we hired our professionals at our reorg meeting. We had first vetted to make sure each of the parties indeed were in compliance with the ordinance, and they indeed are. So I'm not sure who drafted the, that resolution that the public has seen tonight, that it's unreasonable. I'm not sure why. I know we only have, I guess, five or six different firms that we hired this past week or so. But it can be done. It's a matter of making sure that they don't have contributions that may impact their work and the relationships that they hope to create, right, or continue. It's, I think it's a good thing, there's communities, the states, federal governments that are all in favor of it. So I would advocate looking at that ordinance and not just repealing it. If you need to make some changes to make it more reasonable, so be it, fine. But I think in concept, it's something that is important to maintain, and it's remiss to just say, "We're just going to just make it go away again, make believe it didn't exist." I mean, communities all around the country are indeed, you know, have these types of ordinances, and I encourage the governing body to look at, if they feel that it's too restrictive to amend it versus abandoning it completely. On the affordable housing question, as, you know, I think everyone here probably knows, the planning board did vote to adopt the plan that has been talked about. Just so the public is aware, and I'm not going to speak into many specifics, but that plan needed to be created and adopted, we had deadlines imposed by the court, right? So it's not intended that that's the document, that is the only document that would go off into the future, right? There's other steps to that process that would happen. But it's, I think, appropriate in terms of its scale and the detail it gets into for this stage of the game. So I don't think it should be criticized in terms of lack of information. I think it's in conformance what's generally done, community by community. And I urge this council to step up and actually endorse that plan sooner rather than later. We moved our reorg date, actually, at the planning board to make it earlier, to try to have the hearing done, and if we chose to adopt it, so that it would be in your hands sooner. So I appreciate it, get your prompt attention. And this will be a collaborative effort between the planning board and the governing body. It needs to be a collaborative effort, you know, and your attorney, I'm sure, will explain to you the give and take, not the right word, you know, the cooperation that's required in getting this thing done, right? Because we can't, neither one of us operate in a vacuum here. I'm talking about the planning board and the governing body. We each have our roles and are distinctive, but there has to be a cooperative spirit in moving forward with this thing. So I urge the council to move on it. Has a date been set for the, you know, for the hearing? I heard about a special meeting, no one mentioned a date.
I believe we're trying to get June, January 24th, but that's not definite yet, it's a tentative date, it's a January 24th.
Okay. All right, nothing else, thank you.
Thank you very much for chairing the planning board. I know it's a lot of work, and I and the community as well greatly appreciate all your work, Mr. Perrino. I'm actually delighted to hear that the planning board was able to do the best thing possible for the citizens of Anglewood Cliffs and set an example, hopefully, for the rest of the state, and adhere to what I thought was the strictest no-pay-to-play ordinance in New Jersey, despite what I was handed right after the caucus meeting where the five Democrats on council drafted a repeal ordinance. And one of the things they say is, "Whereas such ordinance referring to mine from last December was unreasonable." Well, you've just proven them wrong, so I think they need to change their preamble and say, "Whereas," they just want to hire their friends.
Well, you did hire Mazur, am I correct?
We did, as a matter of fact.
Have you looked into that?
Yes, we have. They've got certification on the record, I think the Borough Clerk has tested the fact that the records are on hand, they've signed and sealed, the fact that they do not have these contracts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Glenn Luciano, 20 Lorrie Drive, Resolution 1948, new fire hydrants. It says it's being approved on the 15th. Fire hydrants in?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
On the fire hydrants in.
I don't believe they're in yet. I believe they were just approved by the fire chief, and Seabed Water will be installing them according to the construction schedule.
Okay, well, I'd like to differ because if you go down Sylvan Ave, and I hope that whoever put them in is going to repair the road to the condition it was before they put them in, because there's already two in that I've noticed on Sylvan Ave. So I do have a question as to how we're approving a resolution of four fire hydrants when two of them are already in. And how did they get put in if the town didn't authorize them to be put in? That's my first question.
Well, it's a good question. I don't have an answer for you. The former Borough Administrator required that paving always be done properly whenever there was repair work, so I intend, hopefully, to continue that with whoever the new administrator is now and will be in the future. But I don't have an answer for you. The fire chief provided this test, saying that he's approved it. So if they've already installed them prior to the resolution, I'll look into it.
Who approves that? I know you're going to look into it, but who physically?
I don't know.
Our Borough Council, do you have a, I mean, do you know who, and does anybody know who?
State Road.
So the state approved it, and we're just approving a resolution afterwards? So, the state approved it, and we're just approving a resolution afterwards? I understand it's a state road, I'm wondering, why are we doing a resolution?
Well, I think there's two things to look at, how they're installed, but also how they're used for the benefit of that building, which we have jurisdiction over. Even though the road is a state road, we may not be able to have much say there, but the placement vis a vis the building and the safety of the occupants is something that our fire department approved.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not questioning the need for fire hydrants. I'm questioning the process of how they were installed, and how they were approved, and how they tore up a state road, whether we have control of that or not, and I believe they still have to advise us that they're going to open the road. So, I'm just, it's not, not questioning the safety, because I probably agree that you're going to put a few thousand people in a building, you probably need fire hydrants. I really got my notices driving down the road and bouncing two feet in the air, and I understand it's winter, and I understand they probably just use the rough, you know, when the steel plate was there, it was even nicer. But then when they paved it, I mean, I think, one, they've kind of repaired. So, I'm not questioning the need for safety, I'm questioning the process of which the people that we elected that are supposed to approve resolutions, that I see, I would, driving down the road, I would have assumed that you've already approved it. And if I was sitting up there, I'd be a little upset if someone's coming to me with a resolution after two of them are already installed. What do I need you for, and no disrespect, but what do we need you to approve a resolution if they're going to do it on their own and not come to you before they install it? And I don't think right now there's a need for fire hydrants, and the building's still in construction.
Can I make a recommendation, have the clerk?
Bless you.
Who is also our part-time administrator for the time being, look into it, and we could table the resolution.
Don't get me wrong, I don't think you necessarily need to table it, because it's already there, so what the heck is the difference? And I think they do need the fire hydrants, but I think going forward, we should be concerned, especially if they're opening a road, just the whole process. You're doing, we're doing something that's already after the fact, and like I said, if I was up there, I'd be a little upset.
You can reach out then if I know, but, you know, you kind of, none of us respect you. All right, it is a state highway. It is approved, but they must put two in.
Mr. Luciano, I received the letter from Suez, and it was asking for permission. So, I forwarded the correspondence to the mayor and to the fire chief. They both approved it. Now, the letter did say, with your approval, I will contact them tomorrow, and I'll follow up with the mayor, letting him know if these hydrants were installed, why did they not wait for our approval and a signed resolution? So, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Well, that's more my point. It's not, listen, I understand the need, I understand the reasoning, I don't agree with the process. You guys are our governing body, whether it's the state, yeah, whether it's the state, the county, or maybe we don't even have control over it, sort of like, you know, DOT and the bicycles on the road that I'm going to go to next, which I'll lead into, because you know what, we say, Captain Hill, whatever is, Mr. Hill, Police Officer Hill, whoever's in charge of the police. Now, last time I was here, I was told it's a police issue. Who's in charge of the police, who's the liaison to the police department now? Can you please find out for me, because if our new chief, or our new acting chief, or whatever the heck we want to call him, is doing such a great job, I'm going to tell you, every day it's eight degrees out, I still see people in the right lane, they think they own the road. It's not acceptable at all, because I think, for one, it's a hazard, and if that's the case, like I suggested the last time, make them turn right on Sage Road, and any bicycle that doesn't turn right on Sage Road, give them a ticket. They have to follow motor vehicle rules. To me, if I drove my motorcycle at five miles an hour on the highway, they would pull me over and give me a ticket for obstructing the road. It says share the road, they don't own the road. They have two and three wide and five deep blocking up the right lane. It's a hazard. Make a bike path, and mayor even mentioned it last time, not a lot of them, but some of them do turn at Sage Road, because it's so dangerous between Sage and Palisade. It really is. But it's very hazardous to the people driving on a state highway that have to avoid these people with trucks and cars at thirty-five and forty miles an hour. It changes to forty miles an hour once you get past that one that's over there. It's very dangerous. We should really kind of, kind of be a little more concerned about it. You mentioned Johnson Field, I think Johnson Field, you said you wanted comments on Johnson Field, needs to, Johnson Park, Woody Field, Woody Field's nice, because you have a bunch of volunteers that take care of it. I think Johnson Field needs to have something. It's a disgrace. But you know what, I don't know if you need to spend two million dollars in advance, my own personal opinion. Once again, I'm going to say something about behind the old LG building. It's winter, but there's still stuff in the road. I mean, I read the plan for the planning board, which I didn't mention, Mr. Perrino, earlier. Part of their approval says that they're supposed to take down all the fallen trees. Another gentleman, David, Mr. De Gregorio, mentioned about recycling our leaves. The only people that seem to be doing that is the corporations, because they take all the leaves and dump it in the curb. That one part is wetlands. I've seen them blowing all the stuff into the wetlands. We should be concerned about that. And I'm being a little sarcastic about, you know, recycling the leaves, it's a disgrace.
They have an obligation to maintain the forest, that's environmental permission and shade tree.
Absolutely.
Maybe we could, is that going to be on, maybe ask shade tree and environmental permission or something?
But I think their opinion is the buffer zone is the first fifteen feet, and the way they maintain it is they blow all the garbage into the rest of the fifty-foot buffer zone. And the new building on Sage Road, in the resolution that I read, only because we have this new thing that I, that for our affordable housing, that I read, said, they're supposed to fix the handicap ramp, which isn't fixed, they're supposed to install trees, and Mr. Perrino and I discussed it, and he's on top of it, they're supposed to install trees that are supposed to be maintained by Burgess, who Burgess is no longer here, whatever, to ensure that it's proper. Thirty percent of the trees that they installed are already dead. They were supposed to clean up all the fallen trees within the buffer zone. You drive past it, there has to be, there's a couple dozen, if not more, I stopped counting at about twenty-five. So, I mean, it's follow-through, you know what I mean? These things need to be maintained. Behind Sage on Johnson Ave, like I come here almost every month, I hate to say, you know, but behind LG, same thing. You have the reeds, because it's wetlands, three feet into the road. It's really unacceptable to me. I live down there, and it looks like crap. Something needs to be done, and we have done nothing, and I've been here repeated times. The affordable housing, I know we've tabled it, I know that I keep hearing that, you know what, we haven't done anything for many years, and the plan that I read, don't get me right on what it told me to be years, but it seems as though we've had indemnification in 2007, and 2009, and up to 2012. So, it seems to me that someone did something. There was some kind of indemnification. So, please don't say that we haven't done anything for thirty years, because we've had indemnification, at least in the plan that I read, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. But what I've read in the plan that was just put out, which is a very thick book, and it seems to me as though we've had indemnification.
I think you're referring to immunity.
Indemnification, immunity, okay, immunity. So, don't say that we haven't had any, someone's done something. I've been through this, and what my point that I'm leading to is, please do something. Please do something. We might not like the attorney, we might not like the plan, but as I've had discussions with a couple people, we need to have immunity.
What would you like done?
I'd like immunity.
Everyone wants immunity. What else would you, what else would you like?
I'd like immunity.
Everyone likes immunity.
Okay, so that's my answer, I'd like immunity. So, I think kicking the can down the road isn't going to give us immunity, and I think we need to be concerned about the court, we need to be concerned about deadlines, and I would respectfully say, I don't care if we don't like part of the plan, some plan is better than no plan, and I'm probably preaching to the choir, you all shake your heads, you all know, but I think I have to just express myself, we need to have that continued, regardless of whether we have nothing at 800, we have something at 800, we have an overlay zone, we need something. The court has come back and said, you need to do something, and from what I heard at the planning board, it's an accelerated, unfortunately for us, it's accelerated. We don't have time to do the right thing, so please do something. If you're going to change the bylaws, I would respectfully request that maybe you should include opening up the public portion again. I know it's very crazy, maybe with a time limit at the very end of a meeting, because right now, it's my understanding, we might talk about changing the bylaws, and my opinion, whoever's in the majority has the right to do that. If you're in the minority, you got to live with it, you can do it, okay? But whoever's, whatever changes you're going to make, or suspend the regular order of business, we used to do it all the time. I think there should be a portion towards the end of the meeting, where the public is allowed to come up again. Maybe not to drone on about Facebook, or the PVA, or, but if it's something that's brought up, like you're going to talk about the bylaws, possibly, I'm making a guess, I don't know, I heard someone else say it, you should afford us the opportunity to get up here and ask a question. I shouldn't have to wait for things, I've always had an issue with public portion at the beginning of a meeting. Because you know what, even like right now, I'm not being rushed, but, you know, I'm thinking about so many damn different things, I might forget something. If I want to come up at the end and put a time limit on it, I don't care. Maybe not at the beginning, unless someone is repeating the same thing, how disappointed they are fifteen, fifteen thousand times, but open it up again, so that we have the ability to not have to wait for a month to ask our question. Thank you for your time, and congratulations, I know it's here through your, but gosh dang, that was just, Happy New Year, Happy Healthy New Year to all of you, and thank you very much.
Alan, I must call on the phone.
Alan? Yeah, still here.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street. I've always been an advocate of allowing the public to speak, and I join Glenn in advocating that you consider, whether you put it in your bylaws or not, whenever you introduce an item that's new to the agenda, that you suspend the normal order of business and allow public comment, I think that a council that hears from the public on items on the agenda or added to the agenda is a council that will serve us better as a community. I've noticed in other communities, what they do is, they not only have limitations on the amount of time you can speak, but they've also inserted that the speech, they have a section where you can speak on anything, but they have a second section where you can only speak on items that have been discussed by the council before the vote. So, it isn't an opportunity to wax poetic on whatever seems to be concerning you. Number two, on the affordable housing issue, I have my comments and my speech ready to go, but I am actually pleased that you are postponing this to the time when I hope you will notice the entire community that there will be a hearing on the affordable housing plan. The court deadline was met, as I understand it, the court deadline for submission of the plan was the 12th of December, and we met that deadline with submission of this plan. But the borough, the residents of the borough, had no idea until about the 4th of January what that plan is. It was, I'm very happy that Mary O'Shea spoke to attorneys when she was on the council, and it's appropriate that she did as a sitting council person. But no one on the public has had the opportunity to question the attorneys and to question the planner about how that plan was constructed, if any alternatives were considered, what the financial implications are of the plan as they've designed it for the residents. And I look forward to having that opportunity and to hopefully opening it up, perhaps a meeting at the upper school, where more residents can attend, to hear about the plan that has been already submitted. On affordable housing, the plan that was submitted, it gives an excellent history on the borough's affordable housing. And it's interesting, because in 1995 through 1997, the borough had an RDP, a realistic development potential of only four units, but we were denied certification. And the reason we were denied certification by COA was not that they disagreed with the four units, but simply because the borough refused to designate Apprentice Hall property, which became the Citibank property, which is now the LG property, as a site for affordable housing. When you move forward, in 2015, our affordable housing number, according to the borough records, was nine, the RDP was nine. It hadn't increased a lot between 1997 and 2015. We had no builders remedy lawsuits filed against the borough. So, yes, we were vulnerable, but nothing happened. In 2017, with the denial of the Normandy application, everything changed for this borough. And I think that people are putting their heads in the sand and not looking at reality if they don't think that the denial by the planning board of the Normandy application was a trigger event of monumental importance to this community, which affected our affordable housing obligation. It was at that point that a builders remedy lawsuit was filed, it was at that point that our RDP increased potentially, actually, our own planner said it's now seventy-seven, Normandy says one hundred and twenty-nine, and perhaps even more, I don't know what the numbers currently may be. The same reasoning that led to this borough denying the application, denying the overlay zone on the LG property in 1997, ironically, are being trusted aside and looked at as a bad thing in terms of the borough by many. And that's the same issue that we have with the Normandy property. Normandy wants to do with its property what we wouldn't allow, what COA wanted the borough to do. So, we're almost in a tandem situation twenty-five to thirty years later. One comment that the mayor made, I take offense at your insinuation that anybody who sits proximate to or talks to the representatives from Normandy, to the lawyers, are complicit with Normandy, or have evil intentions against the borough. I am firmly against the Normandy proposal for 800 Sylvan Avenue. However, I am a human being, as are many others in this audience, and if we are sitting next to someone, we will engage in conversation with them, and that does not in any way discredit the position of the borough, or imply anything more than being civil. One final thing on pay to play. I think your obligation as council persons is to get the best possible people to be our professionals, and that best, that determination of the best possible people is a judgment based on their experience, your ability to work with them, and the amount of money that they're charging.
And their campaign contributions?
I, please do not put words in my mouth, I don't think that campaign, the state has had a pay to play law since 2006. We have been following that pay to play law, which binds the borough to very specific determinants in pay to play. You're, I'm not having a discussion with you, Mr. Mayor, your pay to play law went far beyond, you call it the strictest pay to play law in the state, I'm sure it is, but more than being the strictest one, you go retroactive for four years. Three years just happens to be the time when the Democrats had the professionals that they believed best served the borough in place. And people make contributions to campaigns because they support the people who are running, or dislike the people who are currently in power. That doesn't mean that they are paying money to be appointed to a position. Pay to play is- Pay-to-play is designed to prevent someone from buying a position without competitive bidding. It's designed to prevent sole-source awards of contracts. And it does that. Even the state's pay-to-play requires that you have a reasonable public process that the borough goes through before selecting any professional. And I see no problem in returning to that. We don't have to be mavericks in all cases. Thank you.
So regarding the, the state no pay-to-play law, it's not working very well for the state of New Jersey, so I thought we should try something better here. We are better. We could lead by example. There's no reason why professionals should be making campaign contributions in the hopes of getting appointed consultant, attorney, auditor. It's silly, go out, do a good job, and you'll get hired. Anybody else? Yes. Oh, I also point out that Ms. Geiger is an intervenor in the affordable housing litigation. And the builder, yeah, all right, in the builder's rights case, still the same.
Carol McMorrow, 49 Summit Street. I just want to start off with the reorg meeting. I have to say, and when I came up to the microphone the first time, I, I came up and I wished the two of you the best of luck, I congratulated you, that's, try to work together. It's disappointing, but I will always do the right thing. It's disappointing when, when one person, and collectively, I'll just not only say myself, many people I see come up here, and be really respectful to you guys, and you cannot extend that courtesy. Jimmy, I want to thank you for showing your civility and saying thank you to those of us that served. Debbie, Gloria, Ed, disappointing that you can't even, that you're that small, that you just can't say, hey, guys, thanks for serving, and we worked together for three years, we're on different parties, but you know what? Everybody worked hard, and we all want to do the right thing for the borough. It, it just is not a good reflection on you as people. Your reorg meeting was one of the biggest spectacles that I've ever witnessed, and I've seen a lot of council meetings. Ms. Savari, Ms. O, Mr. Versa, the way that you handled not reappointing the former borough attorney Anne Marie Rizzuto, borough administrator James Barbario, court clerk Tony Saccoon, and even going to the degree of not reappointing the nonpartisan members of the Recreation Advisory Board, it's just, it just shows, you know, for some of those items, it just shows your pettiness. The mayor, the mayor's rights, which are, in the borough code, it's on the League of Municipalities, it's on the borough website, he's got thirty days for a reappointment, and then after thirty days, you get to do what you want to do, you have majority, just follow the rules, everybody gets it, you know, you won. You didn't win by a lot, but you won. And there's a lot of people that didn't vote for you, and you need to look at them too, and that's what I think some of these individuals coming up to the microphones are saying. You're right now supposed to be representing everybody, and you're not acting that way, The next thing that I wanted to bring up is Oprah's. I've read some of the copies with me, if after the meeting anybody wants to see what I'm going to be referencing here. I put an Oprah in, on, I attended Judge Farrington's hearing on the Tracy versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs and Lizette Duffy, uh, hearing, motion hearing. I know Ms. Geiger was there, I saw Mr. Robbins there. Judge Farrington was quite clear in her order. She gave five days to this borough to turn those tapes over. She was quite clear about what is covered in the release of those tapes. She stated everything except for attorney-client privilege. And, you know, the attorney representing the borough, not Ms. Rizzuto, but the, the special attorney appointed, got up and tried to make his case for why there might have been other reasons not to give certain tapes. She was clear. She was adamant, she's the judge, guess what? She makes the rules, okay? You need to turn the tapes over, you had five days. Now, I understand, there was holidays, there was New Years, there was Christmas, and, I get that, everybody wants to work together. Today is January fifteenth. Still, no tapes turned over. Okay, so, I'm going to read from this statement, because I really want the council to understand what some of you are doing, maybe you don't know what some of you are doing, and there's only a few of you acting alone. I personally have not granted an extension in my Oprah of 1221 regarding the production of the audio tapes, amongst other items, which Anne Marie Rizzuto has already opined on. Everyone on the council, and I had written this to Ms. O, everyone on the council, including you and the borough clerk, are well aware that Dominic Carmagnola, the Jiff-appointed attorney representing the borough in the Chaffey lawsuit in which these tapes were produced, was, is in possession of these audio recordings. Because everybody's giving excuses they don't know where the tapes are. I mean, I, I, it's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, how could you not know where the tapes are? Dominic Carmagnola was assigned to this case from January, it's not even before, of 2018, it might have been earlier than that. Everybody knows he's had those audio tapes, and everyone knows the dates that they had the attorney's eyes-only designation lifted, which, don't quote me, but around, I believe, June, Mayor, uh, uh, June is sticking on my head of 2018. So those tapes were accessible to, not Mr. Slung, Ms. Savari, because they weren't on the council, and, but everybody else on this council, had they had the interest to care enough to find out what was on those tapes. You should have, you should have immediately requested the recordings from Mr. Carmagnola, at the least, immediately upon Judge Farrington's order on December 21st. And I know Ms. Duffy knows about it, because her attorney was sitting there at the front table with the other attorney representing the borough. So to say that you didn't know what the judge's order was, or didn't have a copy of the judge's order, which was part of my Oprah request, I was told she didn't have, that Ms. Duffy didn't have a copy of the judge's order, it's outrageous, and it's just insulting to everybody's intelligence here. The borough's actions, and those of the borough clerks, in my opinion, was reckless and negligent in the handling of the above matter. And I hope Mr. Tracy's lawyer, Justin Santagata, goes back to Judge Farrington, or maybe he's already gone back, I don't know, but I hope he goes back, and I hope he lets them know what you guys are doing. It's disgraceful, and you are wasting taxpayer money. That's what you're doing, okay? You're defying a judge's order and wasting taxpayers' money. To compound matters, Al, I totally respect you, okay? I have respect for you, I ask you, just like the other gentleman, he left now, I don't, you know his name, but, recuse when you need to recuse, okay? Recuse when you need to recuse, that's all I'm asking from you. When you have a conflict, and you do have some, you need to recuse. For the, for the, let me, please, you can respond at the end, no.
Let me just address one of the things.
No, I would really prefer, if I can just make my statements and-
The resident would prefer.
The back, right, let me just make my statements, and then address at the end, make the notes of whatever you'd like to address on. Okay, it just makes it easier, okay? We don't need any more litigation, and engaging in areas where you have conflicts, it just exposes the borough to the possibility of additional litigation, and it's better to err on the side of caution, in my opinion on this. So to compound matters, you are now allowing Albert Wunsch to re-review the recordings, which Mr. Carmagnola has already designated, and trust me, it took him a long time to make these designations, because we all know how long we've been waiting, along with Anne Marie Rizzuto. Even though you are aware that Mr. Wunsch was representing Captain Brian Murphy on disciplinary matters as soon as, what was it, nine days ago, when he was appointed borough attorney? From emanating from Captain Murphy's conversations on these same tapes on several different matters. But you're now asking Mr. Wunsch to review. I believe you have a conflict of interest on any of the tapes involving conversations with Captain Brian Murphy. Separately, I believe that the borough clerk is conflicted from handling these tapes, given her conversations on them. There are a lot of inappropriate things said by Lizette Duffy on the recordings produced by Chief Chaffey. And once the borough complies with Judge Farrington's order, which they are late in doing so, the public will have the opportunity to hear everything that borough clerk Lizette Duffy said. I would like to remind everyone that at the time the recordings were made, that Lizette Duffy was also the administrator for the borough, along with being the borough clerk. As a borough clerk, Lizette Duffy is supposed to be nonpartisan. I think we all know what nonpartisan means. Especially given the fact that Ms. Duffy handles the Englewood Cliffs local elections for our residents. It is my opinion, after hearing all the conversations in the tapes that Lizette Duffy engaged in as administrator borough clerk, that she is not acting in a nonpartisan manner. It is my opinion that it would be in the best interests of the residents of this town that Ms. Duffy be suspended immediately, pending a hearing on those conversations that took place. It is also my opinion that borough clerk Lizette Duffy would be conflicted in the handling of many of these audios under Oprah, given her conversations on these same audios. Council President O, how will you be handling this matter that has been brought to your attention?
About what? About Lizette?
About the conflicts that Lizette has, having, did you listen to the tapes?
Can I answer them?
No, no, excuse me, I'm-
I would defer that to the borough attorney, and-
She's not handling it. She doesn't have a copy of the tapes. I have two copies of the tapes, I have both.
Well, before you were here, before you were appointed, hold on.
But you asked a question about her having a conflict, she's not handling the tapes, so the question's been answered, she, you can, you know, we got the answer with regards to tapes.
Okay, about the-
No, you know, she absolutely positively walked over, was given a copy, and handed the entire packet unopened to me. I got a packet from Dominic Carmagnola. You asked a question about getting it from Dominic Carmagnola. Well, it took Dominic about ten days to get it to me, okay? Because I've been requesting it since day one. Anne Marie, Anne Marie Rizzuto, who allegedly did the, you know, the refining, and the defining, and the opining with regards to designations, didn't have a workable copy, which I-
According to who?
According to Anne Marie.
But according to who's saying that?
Anne Marie.
Okay, but Anne Marie didn't say that to me, so to me it's hearsay.
But who said it to me?
She had gone to Mr. Carmagnola's office to listen to them all.
Right, I'm not going to, right, I'll listen.
Anne Marie did not have a workable copy.
But she did listen to them all.
Well, she didn't have it from me.
Okay, okay, I'm not gonna-
So I don't know, you know, what story she's telling everybody, but the story she told me was it was not workable. The judge has a consent order, which extends the time to January 25th, so there is no problem with the court.
Has the judge signed that order?
I'm sorry?
Has the judge signed that order?
Well, the judge is not going to not sign a consent order.
So the judge has not-
All parties have signed.
The judge has not signed it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that explanation.
It's going to upset an applecart with regards to the fact that all parties have Anne Marie.
But the judge-
It's called a consent order.
All right, but the judge has not signed it.
I have the consent of Tracy's attorney, I have the consent of Lizette's attorney, I have the consent of all the attorneys involved.
Mr. Wunsch, if I may just continue for a minute, and I appreciate the fact that you're sharing that you got that consent from, from Judge Farrington, we're not in violation of a court order. That does not excuse you from your responsibilities under Oprah, you have seven business days. Okay, excuse me, if I may, okay. But Ms. Rizzuto, I have a copy here of the list of what she-
I have a responsibility to the people of this town, to make sure that the designations are correct. I work for the people, okay? I need to make sure that they are protected. As I said earlier, okay, I was handed the leaky bag. I am trying to keep from staining my suit, because ultimately, you're going to be paying my dry cleaning. So I don't want to have a stained suit. I want to make sure it's done right, and it's done perfect. And you know what, I, I, I gotta, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, you know that.
I know you do, I know you do.
Because the thing is this, you've always been a perfectionist, okay? You've always been a type of person that in anything you've done, you've always tried to do your best.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and I've always said that, okay? I mean, you know, people think I'm partisan or whatever the situation is, I respect people who do a good job, and maybe I don't agree with it, but I do know that your heart was always stained.
No, I truly appreciate that, and what did I say to you, I said-
I asked you to give me the opportunity to do my job correctly.
But all I said to you, Alex, and I said, and I appreciate that, I mean, you know how I, how, my respect for you and your family is. When you need to recuse, just recuse. That is all what I am saying, and I am letting you know, as someone who has listened to those tapes not, more than once, there are issues on there that you will need to refuse from.
I have taken a note to serve the law, and to serve the people, and I will never violate that.
Well, there is some, there is, there are very disturbing issues with conversations with Ms. Duffy, with Chief Chaffey, certain members of the police department, they are very, very disturbing. I have brought this up, and I am, I, I am-
I have a role of obedience, and I am serving the law.
Okay, well, but-
I am serving the law.
I understand that, but what we have, and that's why I asked Ms. Ms. O, and I would like an answer to this question, have you listened to the tapes yet? No, before Mr., before Mr. Wunsch was appointed-
Carol, before the borough attorney was appointed, I did make two attempts to go to the Borough Hall. I had an appointment to sit with Anne Marie Rizzuto, she, the, the laptop that she was trying to play the, the recordings, it wasn't working. So we, I had attempted to make another appointment, and we had an appointment, but she canceled at the last minute on the day of.
Well, I appreciate your attempting, but I'm saying, I know council, I, I asked Councilwoman, Councilman Ward the last meeting, and Ms. O'Shea stated she, she did listen to them. So clearly, there were individuals that did somehow make that work. I am advising every member of this council to make it, you wrote me in your email, it's a top priority, I'm asking you all to immediately listen to what's on these tapes, okay? It's outrageous, the people in this town deserve better. And people that have made incorrect decisions need to be held accountable. Otherwise, you're telling everyone it's okay to break the law. We have police officers, okay? I have the utmost of respect for Police Officer O'Shea, okay? We, he's hired to do a job, and if he sees someone breaking the law, we all know what he's supposed to do, right? Whether it's issue a ticket, or whatever it is that he feels that they're not doing correctly. He can't say, oh, you know what? I'm not gonna, I'm gonna turn my head the other way, or he's not supposed to, and I'm sure he would never, I'm gonna turn the other way because I know who you are, or this, that's not how it works, that's not the real world. Okay? So I'm just saying, make it a priority, I'm, I'm asking that. Councilman Versa, I'm gonna just, these are just statements at this point, Mr. Wunsch. Councilman Versa and Borough Clerk Acting Administrator Duffy. Councilman Versa, you continually engage in conversations and votes which involve Borough Clerk Lizette Duffy, from the time that she was also the borough administrator. Borough Clerk Lizette Duffy, from the time that she was also the Borough Administrator. Lizette Duffy stated to me that you, Mr. Wunsch, it's important for you to listen to...
I'm listening, I'm just getting some warm water.
Okay.
I was taking a layer of my seat, so, because I've been standing here so long. I was volunteering to give him the seat while I wanted him to sit there, but I am listening, unordered.
Lizette Duffy stated to me that you are her dentist. Councilman Aversa? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Lizette Duffy...
Talking out of...
No, you don't, but you're, you're looking, I don't have, I can't tell if you're reading on your phone again. What is on the phone? Um, Lizette Duffy stated to me that you are her dentist. It also appears that you have been her dentist for many, many years. I would like to again remind you of the statute governing Code of Ethics for Government Officers or Employees Under Jurisdiction of the Local Finance Board, particularly under forty-eight colon nine dash twenty-two point five. Code of Ethics for Local Government Officers or Employees Under Jurisdiction of the Local Finance Board, specifically under D and E, it states, "No local government officer or employee shall act in his official capacity in any matter where he, a member of his family, or a business organization in which he has an interest, has a direct or indirect financial or personal involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair his objectivity or independence of judgment." And E states, "No local government officer or employee shall undertake any employment or service, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expected to prejudice his independence of judgment and the exercise of his official duties." Mr. Wunsch, I'm bringing that to your attention of what was stated to me as well by Ms. Duffy, and I witnessed Councilman Aversa repeatedly vote on matters involving the Borough Clerk Administrator's appointment, salaries, many things, and it appears that there's, uh, some violations here. I'm not gonna engage, no.
If I just may, no, you don't have to engage. I just want to make something clear.
I'm not gonna engage.
I don't recall discussing my medical history with anyone on the council.
You didn't discuss your medical history? I did not state that.
I didn't discuss...
I stated that she stated, I'm not gonna engage in this.
That's fine.
Okay?
I'm just stating that.
She absolutely did. She absolutely did.
I don't recall ever bringing up any physicians, any dentists, any hairdressers.
You, you mentioned that to me as well.
I...
You did.
Can we move on? I'm not, this is not for a debate. I'm telling you the statement that was made. He keeps quoting conflicts of interest. Okay. Um, Ms. O, I also wrote to you about, um, the lack of responses that I was receiving from the Borough Clerk Lizette Duffy on emails that I wrote to her, and, um, she wrote back to me. On behalf of that email, I wrote to you again, and I'm just asking if you can, when you can, to please look into that and get back to me. Appreciate it. Um, on January seventh, I also made an Oprah request for copies of audio tapes requested by Lieutenant James Tracy in his Oprah to the Borough dated December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, where Lieutenant Tracy states the following. Please accept this email as an Oprah request for the PD. Please accept a copy of the following two audio, please, yeah, um, request a copy of the following two audio recordings, which are on file at the police desk recorder. Number one, a phone call on December first, two thousand and eighteen, to the Englewood Cliffs PD main desk line from Anne Marie Rizzuto, the outgoing Borough Attorney. I don't know how he would know she's the outgoing Borough Attorney, but I guess he just knew she was the outgoing Borough Attorney. Um, directing William Henkelman to send a group text message announcing a promotion eligibility. And then number two, a phone call on December first, two thousand and eighteen morning hours from the Englewood Cliffs PD secondary line from Lieutenant William Henkelman to Lieutenant David Hill, wherein Lieutenant Henkelman questions the unusual order from Ms. Rizzuto and verifies the authority to send a text. And then Lieutenant Tracy, I guess he was just trying to be very helpful, stated to Ms. Duffy, "I can retrieve the files when ready." It appears from Lieutenant Tracy's Oprah request and language that he's already heard these two recordings on the police lines, and he even offers to retrieve the files and audio recordings for the Borough Clerk to fill his Oprah request. The odd part here is the response from the clerk in filling Lieutenant Tracy's Oprah. She writes, quote, "Please note, item number two recording was not found by the Police My question to you is, Ms. Duffy, do you know what happened to this audio recording referenced in item number two in Lieutenant Tracy's Oprah request to you?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Sure. So I do not personally fill Oprah requests for the Police Department. I provide all Oprah requests having to do with the Police Department to the Police Department, in this case, to the officer in charge, which is Lieutenant Hill. Okay? So when I provided him that Oprah, he provided me the one CD that they were able to record. I don't question the Police Department.
Uh, I'm not asking you to question the Police Department.
Excuse me, if I may finish, thank you. I provided, I provided Lieutenant Tracy with the one audio CD that was given to me by the officer in charge, Lieutenant Hill.
Okay.
And that's why I said that they were not able to retrieve it.
Okay, did you contact Lieutenant Tracy to see if he could find it?
No, I did not.
He offered to retrieve it for you.
No, I did not. Well, no, that's actually something Officer Hill could have, Lieutenant Hill could have done.
But you're the clerk, you're, you are in charge, you're the custodian of records. You fill the Oprah request.
Right. I responded with what was given to me, which is responsive records.
Okay, but in his Oprah request to you, he stated that the records exist. So I'm asking you again, and I put a follow-up Oprah request in, and you know that I have. Um, if it doesn't exist, and the inference is there that it does exist, then there must have been a destruction of records document, because clearly someone, um, I don't know where the, I don't know where it is anymore. According to Lieutenant Tracy's Oprah, the file exists.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I'll discuss that tomorrow with the officer in charge.
Okay, I sent you several emails on this, and you ignored them.
No, with Oprah and I responded that...
No, you ignored them for eleven days, and that was why I reached out to Councilman O.
It's not eleven days, it was seven business days, excuse me.
No, it was eleven days.
And with Oprah, it's no Q and A, it's a response.
It wasn't Q and A. I, I requested information through Oprah. You ignored me for eleven days.
Okay.
Okay? That's part of the lack of response to the emails, Ms. O, that I'm bringing to your attention. Um, affordable housing. As you are all aware, I was the affordable housing liaison while on the council through October first, two thousand and eighteen. At the November eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, Resolution eighteen dash two forty was passed by a majority vote entitled Creation of an Ad-Hoc Committee Regarding Affordable Housing Litigation. In the resolution, number four, it states, "The committee shall stay in effect until the litigation is terminated, with many other enumerated responsibilities listed in the resolution." It's my understanding, under Robert's Rules of Order, and, um, you can also read your own, um, reorg minutes, that the standing committees and special committees are dissolved and ad hoc committees are not, which means, my understanding is that the ad hoc committee is still in effect, because they're created for special reasons, to, to, to finish a responsibility of a sort, and, um, they're not dissolved at the end of the year. Um, that's how it was explained to me. I believe this happened once before, when they were putting the fire sirens and the new ones. There was a, a special ad hoc committee created for that. So, uh, if you could look into that, Mr. Wunsch, and see, uh, like I said, I believe the ad hoc committee is still in effect, um, to date. No one from this council has reached out to me to ask of my assistance, even though you are all aware of the extensive work and knowledge I have acquired in the almost three years of being the affordable housing liaison to the council. I truly believe, by you not reaching out to me, given my experience, that you are doing a disservice to this town and to our residents. You need to put politics aside and do the right thing for the residents of Englewood Cliffs and work with all of us. I am here and willing to help and assist you. You say you are pulling the two resolutions, number fifty-one and fifty-two, on affordable housing until Mr. Serenian can attend a special meeting. Um, I have to say that, uh, I, I find that troubling. I find it troubling because, um, unlike, probably the only other one that has any knowledge, well, not probably, I know, the only other one that has any knowledge of this would be Mary O'Shea, who's now not on the council anymore. But, um, I, I was in all those closed sessions with you. So I've got more, I have more knowledge than Ms. Sabari or Mr. Song have, and, and I know what all those conversations were. I know what we spoke about. I know what you said, I know what you didn't said, say. I'm not privy, I'm not allowed to talk about that here, and I understand that, but I am very troubled by your delaying this, okay? Um, was Mr. Serenian asked to come to this meeting tonight? Did, did anybody reach out to Mr. Serenian? Did you? Debbie?
No, actually, I've been asked not to speak about affordable housing today, and I'm going, I'm gonna stick with that.
Have you, was Mr. Serenian invited?
I have.
Gloria, was Mr. Serenian invited here?
Under the, um, the mayor's advice, I'm not gonna speak to that. If the mayor wants to speak about it...
I think they're kinda copping out on you. I, I didn't want people speaking on substantive issues.
Right, of course, I know, I know.
This is an issue of, is Jeff coming here tonight or not?
He didn't show up for the last meeting for affordable housing.
I wasn't able to attend because it was hastily called, and I asked you to do a different night, but you didn't.
That was petty, Debbie. That was really petty.
Yeah, so I could do it online, and I could attend.
You're showing your, your...
Well, I know, it's hard up here sometimes, right? Because you have questions and...
No, I'm talking about a very serious, I'm talking about a very, excuse me?
I said, you're criticizing, but you don't know.
I know more than you know. I hate to tell you that.
Okay.
Let's not get this, stop. Okay? You, you need, you need to stop, okay?
I'm just doing, I stopped it for half hour.
No. Well, you know what? There were other people that sat up here for just as long, okay? So I'm giving you my opinion that by postponing this, when you could have invited Mr. Serenian to come here tonight, which I don't believe any of you even extended for him to come here tonight, okay? That's, I did not speak to him, but I don't believe that you asked him to come here tonight. And if any of you really care, I know Ms. Sabari was there, and Mr., Mr. Wu was there, there were, that was some present, Mr. Wunsch was there, that was some presentation he made. I'm disappointed every one of you should have come and sat in that office, uh, that, that audience and listened to the presentation that he made and that Mr. Mistrata made, okay? You have a huge responsibility on your shoulders, and, you know, you, you need to do that. Um, I agree, it should be advertised to the public, okay? It should have been advertised to the public already. Um, there were, I heard comments stating why it has not yet. Uh, Mr. Perino, I already spoke, uh, he has the dates locked down better than I do, but it was only within the last few weeks that we were even allowed to talk about this, um, plan, housing element plan. So to state that we should have done it earlier, you've been in control since January first, it's fifteen days. Why didn't you advertise it? Why didn't you let the public know, guys? You have, you have majority now. Why didn't you do it? Ms. Sabari, you say you can't talk about it? You, you, yeah, right, you're doing the bylaws, pay to play. That stuff's not important, you could do that later. Affordable housing, we have deadlines. You're breaching your fiduciary duty, and if your delay is tonight, I hope does not cause this town any adverse effects. Um, that's it, pay to play, I, um, I hope that you amend it and don't repeal it. I didn't even have, it's not on the agenda, and I didn't get a copy. Again, I think what you guys don't understand is, you have the majority, you can do whatever you want, but you have to follow the laws, and you have to follow the rules. I didn't get a copy of the repealing of the ordinance, it's not even on the agenda. I didn't even know you were gonna go through with it tonight. Another violation. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Katie, nothing? No? Open up to the press? Okay. Uh, have a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Hold a favor.
Aye.
Let's approve the claims. Payment of claims, Resolution nineteen dash four-four, claims, uh, listen up, guys. Listen up, guys. Do you wanna do that, Debbie? Councilwoman Sabari, go ahead.
Motion to move the claims.
Uh, they can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Motion to move the payment of claims, Resolution nineteen forty-four, December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to December, to January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, five million, three forty-two, six eighty-six, forty-two.
We need a second? Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Hey, just go on. Just fine, just go on.
Aversa?
Yes? Hello?
Hi. Uh, we're voting on the claims. You have the resolution?
Yeah.
Is that a yes or a no?
Ellen, can you speak louder, please?
I'm just gonna share the microphone. Okay.
O? Yes? Did I call everyone? Yes. Okay.
All right, um, next up is Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash forty-five. So this, um, hold a second. This resolution, um, the way I had explained it is not the way it appears here. It was supposed to be a list of three individuals, myself, Chris Pataglia, and Lizette Duffy, Borough Clerk, Chris Pataglia, the CFO. Rather than requiring all three of our signatures on, on checks, other than payroll, uh, it was supposed to be any two of the three.
Okay.
Okay? So at the end of that first introduction, preamble, be it resolved that the Borough Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs does hereby authorize, add in any two of the following, add my name, I never said take my name out, somehow it disappeared, the mayor, as signatories on all Borough accounts for all Borough expenditures, excluding payroll, and then it continues on. So that's the way that resolution was supposed to read. Um, and I think as the, uh, the head of the government, I should also be a signer, but somehow I got dropped. Okay, so can I have a, a motion?
So I'll move.
So we're just gonna have two names on?
Uh, I'll repeat everything again for Ed Aversa, who wasn't listening. I'm, I'm adding my name back, and it was deleted, so we're gonna have, this hereby auth, be resolved that the Borough Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs does hereby authorize, add in the words, any two of the following, and then you have three names. Crandack, Pataglia, and Duffy. All right? Is that it?
Okay. Uh, we need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Uh, yes, as, as amended.
Right, thank you. Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
No.
Aversa?
I, I think we should, in light of what's happened, I think we should make that by essence, and repeat that. I don't think we should, too, because we're...
Can you hear me? Is the microphone on?
Uh, it's on.
In terms of what?
Very fortunate.
So it's, um...
What, you said in terms of what's happened, but we're voting, so...
Yeah, I know, what you wanna have. So in terms of your stamp, can't we put...
The stamp problem was solved. I, I took my name off the stamp, so there's two names on there right now, if you need me.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, if you need me, I'll comment and sign. But the, the issue here is, I don't want my signature around Borough Hall without my, um, uh, my custody, so...
I understand, ma'am. Can you put in, um, and/or, or is that not, you don't wanna do that? that?
It's or. It's basically any two of the following.
No, I mean, with your name, like mayor and/or council president?
No, no, we're, it's not, we're not doing it that way, because that's not the way it's been done in the past, historically.
That's why I'm asking, because in the past, historically, it's been three names, and it's, I just want to, is it okay to do, that's what you're saying, two of the three names, is that acceptable?
It's fine, our bank is fine with it.
Okay. That's the question, thank you. Okay.
So is it changing?
No. It's not a change, you voted yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh?
No. It passes.
All right, so, Ed, you voted yes, correct?
I said yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. Resolution 46, authorize mayor to sign governor's municipal drug alliance, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Forty-seven, authorize tax settlement, Calisate's property management, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Forty-eight, authorize order for fire hydrants?
Especially?
Yes.
You approved this already, right? The fact that they've already...
No, no, I haven't approved anything yet.
So Wes wasn't given the permission to do a fire hydrant?
No, I didn't tell him. I want to find out tomorrow.
Let me tell you what happened. The fire chief, the fire chief said it was fine.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I'm not an authority on fire hydrants, so I defer to him, but the council has to approve it.
Okay.
And then we found out from our public speaker...
So what's the protocol?
They'll ask forgiveness rather than permission at that point, I guess, I don't know.
Do we vote yes?
I think we should vote, we should vote yes, but reserve any rights, maybe if they've already done it, I don't know.
That's fine.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second? Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Forty-nine, tonnage grant application? Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Fifty, reimbursement certificate, tax reimbursement certificate, motion?
So moved.
Second? Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
We need a voter, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the amendments to the bylaws, the first reading today.
Can you, look, I practice law, and whenever we amend anything, what we do is, we take the old version, and we mark it with the additions and deletions in the new version, we call it a redline version, so we could all see what was added, what was deleted. You, as the public, deserve to have that right as well. I, as mayor, am watching my powers get usurped by these folks here, because they're not respecting the law that I quoted earlier. I don't have the redline version, myself, I don't have it for you. I receive this at about 9:00 PM. Look, it's unprofessional, it's shoddy, it's all of the above. I don't support any changes, they're trying to limit your free speech. I just think it's a reflection on you, if you're actually moving this in without...
I made a motion.
Without redlining.
I second.
There's a second.
Well, there's a second, but I'm just saying that it's a reflection on you, and what I, remember what I said earlier, don't try to steal someone's power, remember that. Okay.
So there was a motion?
And by the way, they tried to do this at the reorg meeting, and Al Wunsch said, "Oh, yeah, it's fine, you could do it at a reorg meeting." I said, "No, it has to be at a regular meeting." In fact, it has to be at two regular meetings.
This is the first reading, Mayor.
And he kept, he kept demanding that he was right. He was right then? No, he was wrong, that's why they're back today. And the judge told you yesterday not to do this today.
The judge also told you, through your associates, that you were not supposed to be controlling the agenda, taking matters off without participation...
I think you're misstating that, sir.
I am not mistaking it.
You're misstating it.
You asked Mr. Flinter that you were, you were told by the judge that you do not have the sole authority to take matters off of the agenda.
Not one councilperson, not one councilperson contacted me directly with anything, that they wanted to add or delete. You had a vote. No one councilperson asked me, and the things that were asked through the clerk were not appropriate.
It's pending. Is the motion a second?
Who seconded it?
Well...
Ed Aversa did. Roll call, please. Councilperson Wu?
Well, can we go through the changes, page by page, and open to the public as well? I'd like to open to the public. Could I have a motion to open to the public, to let them speak on this and understand it? So moved.
It's pending and should be voted.
I don't, I don't even need a motion. If anyone from the public wants to come up, raise your hand. No, I don't actually, I don't.
You need a motion to open in the hierarchy of the motion...
No, in the hierarchy of Open Public Meetings Act, uh...
You need a motion, Mayor, come on, you've been doing this for three years, roll call.
And you've been doing this for too many years, Gloria, and you're still not a mayor.
Let's go.
Councilperson...
I'd like to hear from the public.
They have an opportunity at the next meeting.
Councilperson Wu?
Um, given that I...
So you're pleading this as an ordinance?
Yeah. My comment is, I think this is going to subject us to future lawsuits, given that the court response was only given to us yesterday, I think we're very rushed in pushing this through. I looked at it briefly, similar to the mayor, got it at 9:00. It's different already from the last one I saw, and definitely don't have enough time to look at this and make a vote on this, so I'm going to say no.
And by the way, you could have just shared it with everybody before the meeting, Gloria.
We wouldn't want to put it on the agenda, Mayor.
You could have shared it.
Well, you know what I asked?
You didn't share it. You didn't share it. Sharing is caring, she doesn't care about you all.
Well, apparently you want to control the agenda.
Well, I want to control the parts of the agenda that belong there and not put things that don't belong there, like lawsuits that don't exist shouldn't be on there.
It's not dictatorship, the council should be able to put things on the agenda, you're more than welcome to put whatever you want on the agenda as well, but we have a right to as well.
Well, you do have a right to, but you just call me, I never hear from you people.
That's not the problem.
You don't want to talk to me, right? You just want to stand in the public.
I'm not here to fight with you.
If you ask me to put something on, and it makes sense, we'll put it on, right? We'll do this together.
Big sense in your eyes, right, Mayor?
Yeah, that's a problem, that's a problem, Ari.
Well, you want to repeal the no pay to play, so you can hire all your friends, that's a different issue. That's the next guy.
That's your view, and that's okay, you're entitled to your view. I understand that, it doesn't mean I have to agree with it.
Okay, I hear silence from the Borough Attorney, because he's probably conflicted on this also, but let's, uh...
Song?
Let's go.
Silence from the Borough Attorney, how about this?
Let the votes be taken.
Sabari?
I'm going to vote yes. This, these bylaws, actually, we did take into account, we do believe that we had the right to institute new bylaws without having two meetings, but for the sake...
You know you're wrong, I know. You know you're wrong. You have to have two meetings.
Can you let me finish?
Well, I want you to make sense when you speak.
Mayor, so, okay, in the hopes of avoiding litigation and listening to what the judge had to say, we amended what we originally had put out there to take, to put your powers back in place, Mayor, and in fact, to just try to restore civility to the meetings. So as far as our agenda...
We had a very civil meeting today.
Our agenda committee, which we're proposing in here, is not to not allow things to get on the agenda. Everybody will be able to put what they want on the agenda, and it will be voted on. It's not about taking away anybody's power, it's about trying to restore some civility to the way the meetings are run. That was always the intent, and I'm sorry if that's not the way it was taken, so we are, under the advisement of what I heard, we made some changes. And I think these changes do in fact give the mayor back the power that he feels was taken away. So I am going to vote yes, and I suggest it was handed out to the residents that you read it, and come back in February, and if you still have concerns with what we've done, you should voice them, because I do want to hear them. So we are trying to do the right thing.
For the public, they're taking away your voice, they're putting you back where you were for 42 years in a political, political mob controlling this town. They're putting you back, they're putting you back, they're putting you back, they're putting you back in those shackles, everybody. They don't want to hear from you, they don't want to give you the opportunity to hear from you, and they're going to continue doing this. It's going to get worse, everybody, because that's how these people behave.
It will never be good.
Okay?
Councilwoman Park?
Yeah.
Aversa?
Oh, yeah.
Oh?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing, the second reading?
The taste of power, Gloria.
February 13th.
Just like blood in the water.
It's a good way.
Okay.
All right, can I have a committee council member report, please?
We're tabling them.
We had tables, I'm at the caucus.
Thanks for running the meeting. Matt Mayor's got the control.
Well, the Borough Attorney would have told me if we had to do anything else, so we took them off after caucus, that's all they said that we had to do.
If you wanted to vote, just tell...
Point of order, like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance 1901, this is the second reading, and open it up to the public.
How is this a second meeting?
This is the second reading. We introduced by title, and now this is...
Where's the ordinance?
You have it, and it's also been put out, it's been handed out, and the mayor would not allow us to put it on the agenda. This is the reason we need an agenda committee.
Exactly.
It's not a dictatorship.
Well, how are you adopting this if it wasn't introduced correctly the first time?
It was advertised.
It wasn't introduced correctly the first instance?
I second that.
You did it at a reorg meeting, which is marked as disreorg.
Okay, so you're, this is a motion to open it to the public.
All right, and for the public, this is the repeal of the no pay to play statute, ordinance?
Uh, open to public, councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Open to the public, Mayor?
So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard regarding ordinance 1901, introduction of ordinance 1901, two reading, oh, second reading to repeal ordinance 18-18, according to them, it's a second reading, according to me, it's the introduction, we'll let a judge decide, I'm sure. But come on in and have your say, yes. By the way, who wrote this?
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive.
Who wrote, who wrote this?
It was Adam.
Who typed it? No one wants to take, it just showed up? Come on, stand behind your work, who wrote this?
Imagine.
Gloria, you wrote this?
Writing it.
Who's going to take responsibility for this writing? I almost said something else. Did you write it, counsel? No?
I already told you the answer.
You didn't write it, Gloria didn't write, Ed, did you write it?
I did not write this. No.
William, did you write this?
No.
Jimmy, you write it?
No.
Deborah?
No, I did, I did.
There was written that, there was written that...
Spartacus? Did you write it, Deborah?
No.
What was that, did you write it?
No.
Okay, so this is the ordinance that showed up tonight at 9:00. Apparently just showed up out of thin air. Get used to it, because a lot of things are going to show up out of thin air, everybody. No one's willing to stand behind it. It's okay, we'll have fun with this later.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive, I have a number of comments. First, this is not on the agenda. Second, it was not in the packet handed out. Third, it was put out on the table outside the council chamber at some point after I arrived at the meeting. There was no announcement made that it was put out there. I haven't had an opportunity to read it, because I just got it. There is a lawsuit challenging the validity of the reorganization meeting, and specifically challenging the introduction of this ordinance, because you failed to advertise that you intended to do it. All you're doing is looking for another lawsuit.
I'm just looking to find out who wrote this. Yes.
All joking aside, I don't find this to be funny at all. I'd like to know who wrote this. You cannot do what...
Our Borough Council says he did not.
I do not, really, I don't find this amusing at all. Someone up on that day needs to take responsibility for who wrote a borough ordinance that you're looking to pass as borough law. Who wrote the ordinance that you're saying was, before we even get to that part, I heard Ms. Sabari say this was advertised in the newspapers. Did you, did I hear you say this?
The worst.
Okay, so who authorized the clerk? Who instructed the clerk to advertise this? Miss Duffy, who instructed you to advertise this?
It was a first reading, I always advertise whenever there's a first reading.
Especially if who, her client.
No, no, I advertise it.
You were at the reorg meeting.
Correct.
Okay. You heard the numerous statements from members of the public as to the validity, as to whether or not you were allowed to introduce an ordinance at a reorg. or not you were allowed to introduce an ordinance at a reorg. You have been an administrator. You're a borough clerk. You now are, again, a part-time administrator. You should know the law of the difference between special meetings and regular meetings. And when you can't excuse me, where you advertise the reorg meeting, did you put... Was this in the reorg meeting?
No.
So, then you know you can't... That can't be a first reading.
It was an introduction by title at the reorganization meeting.
That's a special meeting. You cannot do that, Miss Duffy. You know you can't do it.
There was a vote, and I put it in the newspaper, because it was also advertised at the reorganization meeting.
But you know you can't do this. You're participatory. And that's a lawsuit that's going to happen against this town.
I disagree, but I accept your...
Okay, well, okay. Well, look into that. Because I know it was brought up at the reorg as to the validity of the introduction there. Has anybody done any research since the reorg as to the validity of its introduction? Has any of you? You've got three lawyers up here, not counting the mayor. I wasn't even referencing...
Well, I didn't even question. I'm sorry.
Did anyone do any research into the validity of allowing this to have had a first reading at a special meeting of a reorg that was not advertised? Has anyone done the research and looking into that?
I did.
No, Mayor, please.
It's not valid.
The reorg is not a special meeting.
Yes, it absolutely is.
It is. The judge said so yesterday.
It is. The judge said it's...
The judge actually said that yesterday.
It's a reorg.
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting. It is a special meeting. Did anyone do the research from the reorg? Has anyone up there? Because that was on your list of things to look into as to whether or not you could. That's number one. Number two, so now we have an ordinance that no one up there is taking credit for writing, yet you're going to vote on something that you don't even know who wrote it? Are you guys a joke or what? You can't be really council people.
Why do you think you've told everyone who wrote every ordinance you've ever...
Yes, we do, actually.
They had Park yelling in the background that we all wrote it. So, now, somebody's lying up here, because all of you just said...
This is like the Englewood Chris Spartacus moment, right? We all wrote it.
Alan Park is yelling in the background.
All right, look. Hold on a second. Mr. Wunsch?
It's pretty simple.
You could advise the council appropriately right now that this should be an introduction and then you could pass it later. And save yourself a lot of trouble. You're an attorney. You should be able to opine.
There is a motion pending. I do not have the ability to...
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
You could take a position.
It's the public...
All right, well, let me ask you a question. Is this a valid, uh, public hearing on a ordinance? Is this valid?
Is what valid?
What you're doing right now. You're saying it was introduced at the reorg. Was that valid?
By title.
Was that valid? I'm going to rely on your legal advice, okay?
Yeah, what did the judge...
This is your legal opinion, okay? Forget about history and all the history that you know. This is a legal opinion. Was it validly introduced at the reorg meeting?
Let's hear what the judge has to say.
I mean, you were there at the hearing, Al, so did the judge say that the reorg is a special meeting or a regular meeting?
The judge said that the reorg is not considered a regular meeting.
Okay, then it was illegal. Finally! We've been saying it all along.
So, Lou, can you rescind the... I don't know what's the right term to use for the motion.
We call the motion. We do that.
We rescind your motion.
All right.
It's not illegal. Maybe it's improper.
Well, Ellen, I don't care what she says. She just said it's not illegal. It may be improper, though. I mean, that makes it...
What you guys need to do...
No, thank you, Carl.
But what you need to do is admit that you did it incorrectly before. That's number one. But number two is, I'm asking you again, who wrote this ordinance that you are voting? Who wrote it?
They're not...
Mayor, please.
It doesn't matter.
No, it does matter.
It doesn't matter to us.
It doesn't matter?
So, wait a second.
I never know who writes any of our ordinances up, yet I vote on them.
It's supposed to be the borough attorney.
Our borough attorney, since I've been mayor, our borough attorney has always written ordinances.
That is not necessarily true.
I have never heard...
Well, it may not necessarily be true, but since I've been mayor, every resolution and every ordinance has been written by an attorney.
If the borough attorney didn't write it, and I can understand that, what you're saying. But then somebody on the council needs to take ownership that they wrote it, that's all. But none of you are saying you wrote it. So, where did it appear from? Did it just drop from the sky and fall into everybody's lap?
It was actually introduced the last time with regards to where it came from. They had a discussion on it. It's been changed. I cannot state that I did it. I didn't do it.
I appreciate your honesty.
But I did. I did also, as I had sworn I would do, honestly reveal to the governing body and also to the spectators here and the people that the judge claims that... And I don't necessarily say I agree with that disposition, but she said that that was... That her feeling was it was not a regular meeting. And that it had to be specifically stated it was a regular meeting.
And that's what many of us were trying to explain to all of you before, and you were adamant and pushing forward with the agenda that was breaking the law. And each one of you broke the law at that reorg meeting.
With regards to the bylaws, okay? It is true that in the beginning of that meeting, it is we move to adopt the bylaws from the preceding year and go forward. So, that could in and of itself open a door to possibly amend it. That is the position that was taken originally. We were in front of a judge. I was there with two of his attorneys, okay? And the judge said that, in her opinion, it was not a special meeting. I have to tell you, quite frankly, I did not agree with that, okay? But I'm not going to say my opinion trumps that of a governing member of the judiciary. And Judge Fisher is an excellent judge, and I respect what she has said.
I understand that. No, and I happen to agree with what she was saying, so...
But, I mean, you know, I have... But this was written by somebody we consulted with. It's not...
I know, but...
All right, well, here's the thing.
Mayor, you must give me...
We're going to wrap it up. I think we're going to go backwards.
I understand, but as a public, we have a right to know who you are taking legal advice. I commend Mr. Wunsch for being honest and saying, "He didn't write this." Okay? Okay, he didn't write it, no problem. Who wrote it? If you're getting advice from a different attorney other than the borough attorney, you need to just tell the truth to the residents in this town who you're taking advice from, because that advice, if incorrect, is getting everybody sued. You've already been sued twice here in office two weeks.
If we're going to be looking at it from the standpoint of the verbiage that's in this, I have no problem with the way it is presented. I have no problem... You might like it, Al.
I'm not saying that. You're going to start... Oh, that's not the point. The point is...
What's wrong with the way it's written?
The point is, this popped out of nowhere. It landed in the back desk. It's not on the board.
All right, let's...
We've made our point, okay?
Okay, here's the thing, everybody.
Tell the truth who you're taking advice from.
Here's the thing.
It's going to get us all some more.
Are we going to, um...
Still open to the public.
Are we still doing this?
I think we can do it with the rest of the public.
All right. All right, I'll be with you in a second. Here's the thing, folks. Councilwoman Al, if you want to be a leader, you have to stand up and lead, which means telling people what the facts are, who wrote a document. It's a simple thing. Who wrote the document? It didn't just show up at the gas station.
You can pontificate all you want, Barry O. The answer was given to you. You don't like it?
I'm done pontificating, but if you want to be a leader, and this goes to everybody up here, stand up and lead, because that's what you were elected to do. You weren't elected to play games and be political up here, okay? Once you cross that threshold, politics ends, okay? All right, next.
Well, then let's move forward with it.
Anybody else? Yes.
Might we take the woman who hasn't spoken?
If he never takes me...
I'm sorry. I saw her after.
You'll be next. You will be. Okay. Would you like to speak also? Or you could go after her if you'll...
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. Um, I'm really disturbed with what just transpired. And, you know, we have seven elected officials, counting Ellen on the phone and the mayor. Uh, we have an employee. We have an appointed attorney. And we have basically a shadow government running the town from behind the scenes, drawing up, uh, ordinances and bylaws and everything else, which Mrs. Tabari said we put together. We, I don't know who the "we" is, but apparently there's a shadow, a shadow government giving you guys instruction, and it's really, really bad. You know, like they talk about, you know, like the Wizard of Oz? The wizard was behind the curtain? Who's behind the curtain pulling the strings here? Okay? Very, very disturbing. And I remember when we were talking earlier about the bylaws and the bylaws in 2010, Island Plucker went on and on and on to Robert Agresta, "Who wrote the bylaws? Who wrote the bylaws?" That was like the chant, okay? So, now we say, "Who's writing the ordinance?" Okay? Nobody should be doing that except the borough attorney. And Albie, until tonight, I did not realize that you were appointed for 60 days. And I was wondering, is that a 60-day placeholder that you're doing so that they can repeal the pay-to-play and hire whoever they wanted that had violated? Why are you hired for 60 days? I mean, I know you're out of your realm in this. I mean, you're not used to being a borough attorney. You're not used to the rules and things that go on with this position. You're more in the courts with... Where you usually practice your trade. So, you're really a little bit out of your realm. And I think that you're just a placeholder here for 60 days, because I thought you were appointed for a year until tonight, when I heard you said you were only here for 60 days.
The resolution that was passed...
Well, who could... Who saw the resolution? Nobody saw the resolution. The audience never got any of the resolutions from the reorganization meeting. We didn't even get a list of the names.
They gave them all to the mayor.
Pardon me?
They gave them all to the mayor. I don't know what he did with them.
The borough clerk hand makes up the ordinances and hand... I mean, the papers and hands them out. There was nothing to hand out to the residents. We did not know that you were appointed for 60 days. Okay? And to me, that's a placeholder. Okay? That you're sat... You're sitting there to hold the seat, keeping it warm for somebody else. Is it Carter Carson, Breslin, Breslin coming back? Is that who's doing these ordinances and the bylaws behind the scenes? Is Carter the one that's behind the curtain?
Why are you talking to me about it?
Because you know what's going on, Albie. You know what's going on. You would never have taken this for 60 days, okay? Because you... But you did. You took it. You took it for... Because you're a loyal Democrat. And your mother was a loyal Democrat, and that's why you got all those positions in the courts, because your mother was a loyal Democrat.
Mother was a Republican.
Let's focus.
To be honest, a Democrat because it was advantageous to her. It was advantageous to her. My grandfather was the first Democratic councilman in Englewood Chris. My grandfather, okay? Because the Republicans were in control then, okay? So, you know, we both...
...in control until 1976.
What?
There was the Republicans...
I know, stagnate, stagnate. When the, you know, when the Democrats take control, take the pledge for the million-dollar mile, the trillion-dollar mile, stagnate, bro.
Of course, it's only on this ordinance.
I don't care. It's tomorrow already.
I had a meeting that, you know, I had a rule you have to add in each meeting in the day it started, and we're about to break that rule. Uh, Councilwoman Al, did any attorney at Breslin and Breslin write this ordinance?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, signed to record.
You know what? Up there.
Yes. In the back row there.
Oh, so I can see.
Yeah, sure.
And don't worry, guys. I'm not going to be the judge and jury. Uh, Lynn Norrett, Nine Willow Drive. And this is regarding specifically this ordinance. I believe it was introduced under an item entitled "New Business on the Reorganization Agenda." New business generally means new business. The issue with the bylaws was an issue with the bylaws. It doesn't... It doesn't seem to hold true to this ordinance, and I do believe this ordinance needs to be repealed so that it could be looked at in detail. I know that you absolutely believe in it, Mayor, but the timing is a little suspicious. So, I think that the group has to get together and see what it says and why it says, and not necessarily go back four years for your convenience. They may decide to do it. They may decide not to, but it didn't quite make sense for you to bind the new council just as soon as they came in, because your people weren't on it anymore.
Well, my people didn't have a...
And that is truly...
My people didn't have a problem with campaign finance.
That... I don't... You know, you always have to come in. I think it's like, just... Anyway, I'm not going there. Uh, so anyway, I think it is a good idea. I think it is probably legal and, uh...
Okay.
I certainly hope, as I...
Did you say probably legal?
I am not a lawyer. I believe that under new business, you could put it through. I am not a... As I say, I am not a lawyer. I am... And I think that you're going to tie their hands, because in 30 days, they can't make their, um, appointments, and I think you know that. So, I believe new business is new business, and therefore, kudos to you for trying to put together a better ordinance than was done, and I'd like to see it happen in the future.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. So, when I was on the Board of Health, I had a complaint about a lady on the street. I won't go into names and addresses. Somebody complaining about her pool cover and the...
I'm sorry, you can only speak to the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, this is in reference to the ordinance.
Okay.
This is my point about the ordinance. And, um, this lady was very upset, and she asked me to... How can I get the information on who called? And so, since I was new there and nobody was really helping me, I reached out to Mr. Carter Carson, who was the attorney at the time. And he sent me a letter, not an email, not a phone call. He sent me a letter on his letterhead, saying that I absolutely had the right to give that information to that resident, because it was a public phone call and it was public whatever. And so, I sent it over to Ms. Duffy to have her fill it. She immediately sent me back an email, saying that, according to her interpretation of the laws, that that would cause issues between neighbors if she were to reveal who this person was. I immediately sent an email to Carter Carson, who's the attorney. I'm thinking, "Who knows best?" You know, he's the attorney. And after a loo... I think he waited two days and maybe discussions or whatever. I'm just assuming. I'm not saying it happened. He sent me back... He called me and said, "I didn't quite understand it right, and therefore, you're not allowed to release that name." All I want to say is, is that an attorney who's representing the town, who gets a question, should have been able to know the law 100% and not let Ms. Duffy confuse things about not releasing those names. I know the names are released all the time. Information is released all the time. And this resident was very, very upset. This is what it has to do with. How can you not know who wrote this? This scares me. Who wrote it? I'm serious. Did you write it?
I have an answer for you, Ms. Norrett.
Yeah. Who wrote it?
So, before Wendy, Mayor, you know, waved the sheet on who typed this up. I didn't type this. So, I said, "I didn't type this up." Last... At the last reorg, the ordinance, when it was introduced, I had written this.
Oh, well, why didn't you say so before?
You know why? Because he asked me who wrote this. I didn't write this.
Okay.
I didn't type this up. I...
So, my question is to Ms. Duffy.
Well, that's a funny story.
How did Ms. Duffy get this?
She got a copy at the last meeting.
At this exact... At this exact...
Of the ordinance.
I never got that.
Come on, man.
You know what? A nice, a nice, Miss So, Miss So, you're an attorney with all due respect, that's a really nice cry for us.
All right.
You should have said that to begin with. None of you owned up to it, and this scares me more than anything else right now. Shame on all of you for not owning up to it.
You don't want to hear what I have to say?
All right, as long as we're open to the public. All right, Ms. Geiger, thank you.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street.
Now we know.
I must be living in an alternate universe. I attended the reorganization meeting. The reorganiz, at the reorganization meeting, it was clearly stated by this council that Lizette Duffy would be the acting borough administrator when James Barberio was terminated. It was also clearly stated by this council that Albert Wunsch would be the acting borough attorney until a permanent replacement could be appointed. It was stated as part of the appointment process in full public session. But you just talked about it. Now, we're going on with the ordinance.
Stop. Let her speak.
With the ordinance. The ordinance was introduced at the reorg meeting under new business. It was introduced by title. I have sat here for five years hearing ordinances introduced by title with absolutely no explanation of them other than the fact that this will do X, an ordinance for Y. Nothing more was offered to the public. The introduction by title is the signal for the borough administrator, or for the borough clerk, rather, to publish the full resol, the full ordinance so that the public has 10 days to examine that ordinance by law. And then we come to a public meeting, which probably is this meeting, and we have the opportunity to speak about the ordinance that was published in the paper 10, at least 10 days ago. Has that, to my knowledge, that process took place with this ordinance. Certainly, I, as a resident, saw it published at least 10 days ago in the paper and had the opportunity to read it. I don't understand the nonsense that went on about who wrote it. The ordinance by title was introduced. A piece of paper was given, which Ms. Oh says she gave, to the borough clerk to publish. That is the ordinance that appeared during the recess of this body between the caucus meeting and the regular meeting at the rear of the room where we get copies of the agenda. It was available in multiple copies, and we were all told we could get it. Many of us went there, perhaps not all did, perhaps not all were listening, but I certainly heard it, and I went there to obtain my copy, which I have. So I don't understand what prohibits this borough as a council from adopting this ordinance today. It was introduced at a public meeting. It was under new business, which was an agenda item at that public meeting. It was only introduced by title. The public had noticed of that as a new ordinance. We had the opportunity to read it. We had the opportunity to review it. It was clearly available and published, and we had the opportunity to speak about it at a public hearing held at a public meeting, which is this meeting. In addition, the fact that so many people in the public, including myself, spoke to this ordinance earlier in the meeting shows that we were aware that this was an ordinance that would be adopted. So let's not play games about what happened. I do support the repeal. I support it because I don't believe in only restrictive ordinances that only affect the future. If you really wanted an ordinance that was pay-to-play in this kind of manner and in this strictness, you should have put it into effect three years ago when you had full control of the council. But you didn't do it in 2016. You didn't do it in 2017, and you did it in December of 2018 when Ed Aversa clearly said that if you put this forward, one of the first acts of the newly-elected council would be to repeal it, in his opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so three reasons why you're wrong, Ms. Geiger. One, I had 30 days to fill a vacancy in the borough attorney position and borough administrator position, and that was violated. Two, the fact is, and I like how you play with your words because you refer to it as a public meeting, public, right? But we have to have it at a regular meeting, which is a public meeting, and so a special meeting is a public meeting. But you have to have it at a regular meeting. So I like how you try to, like, pull the wool over everybody's eyes, okay? It was not done at a regular meeting. It was not introduced at a regular meeting. It could be introduced tonight if this council so wishes. And the third reason why you're wrong is none of my appointments violated anything in this ordinance. So they were all compliant from day one because I would only hire people who would be compliant. It's only when, when the smoke we came in that we had to worry about it.
Mayor, that's the business perspective. So, okay, let's do... Put up as the borough prosecutor, Mark Ramondo. Mark Ramondo didn't put it in our case because he could not qualify under your...
And, and, and...
We still appointed him as the...
He's a holdover. He's a holdover. Anybody else?
He wears a holdup.
Anybody else? You're out of order, counsel. Counsel, you're out of order. Hold on a second. It's just public. Hold on.
The county mayor, who wrote Resolution 19-49? Who wrote it?
You wrote that.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you should have. Anybody else?
That's not an answer. The point is...
Hold on a second. You're, you're, you're out of order. You're talking about tonnage.
Who wrote 19... Who wrote Resolution 19...
You can divert, you could digress, but the bottom line is...
19-51.
That was given to me by, that's Jeff Serenian wrote that.
Oh, okay.
He sent it to me last night.
1949. No one in the audience seems upset about the fact that...
Yeah, well, you know, talking about, talking about leaf cards, yeah, you know, you need to back off. You need to back off. You need to back off. We're talking about an ordinance. All right. We're talking about an ordinance, so back off, Mr. Wunsch, because you're not talking any sense.
You don't know who wrote it.
Anybody else? I know everything that happened there, okay? I have notes. Anybody else? Okay, let's have a motion to close and then...
Close it, pause second.
All right. All in favor?
All in.
All right, so here's the deal. You could introduce this ordinance tonight if you want, but you can't approve it according to Mr. Wunsch, okay? So we need to, I guess, rescind the motion that was made.
Is that correct, Al?
There's a motion made? It was rescinded?
No, no, no. There was a motion to open to the public and to close.
Right, so we did that.
Right, there hasn't been a motion to...
Okay, so if you want to introduce it, you can introduce it, but otherwise we need to get out of here. It's late.
I'm not sure.
All right. All right, so can a motion to adjourn?
No.
No.
There is a motion out there. I think Debbie made that motion.
She made a motion to open to the public.
Wasn't there a motion?
There was a motion to open to the public by Sabari and a second by Ed Aversa.